Join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We'll observe a moment of silence. Thank you. And before we go on, we are so fortunate in Peachtree City that we were not hard, hard hit by Hurricane Helene. But we still have several staff members, entire departments, that I want to lift up because we were well-prepared. Our staff put together an emergency operations center the night before the worst of the storm came through. And lots of our staff stayed up overnight, through the night until Friday noon to make sure every tree was moved, every drain was unclogged, and to minimize damage and flooding and inconvenience. And those departments, people who were up through the night include Justin Strickland and admin. We had communications people up through the night, engineering, public works, IT, police, and fire. I want you to join me in thanking them. And on another related note, at Falcon Field, there is an airlift operation going on right now for donated goods. You cannot believe the private pilots who have just walked in and said, okay, my plane's right here, let's load and go. They're doing that today still. Falcon Field is open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. It started yesterday, and it is a robust operation. If you feel so inclined to go to Sam's Club or Costco and buy diapers, baby items, feminine hygiene products, pet food, ready-to-eat food, not jars of spaghetti sauce. These are going to people whose homes are wiped out and they have no power or water. Ready-to-eat foods, you get the idea, paper products, Clorox wipes. Please don't bring bottles of water, don't bring bleach liquids, don't bring cleaning liquids. Those are heavy to haul in the planes, and they're dangerous if they leak. So we can't take those in the airplanes. But take a look down at Falcon Field. It's a very impressive operation, and the planes are still running. Yesterday, they were going to Douglas County, Georgia. And then late in the day, after the president left Asheville, Asheville airspace was to be reopened, and we were taking supplies to Asheville. It's amazing and impressive down at the Peachtree City Airport. With that, we have public comment.
Madam Mayor, we have six people who signed up to speak. The first one is Lois Brettemeyer.
I don't hear your microphone.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? First one to speak is Ms. Lois Brettemeyer.
Good morning. My name is Lois Brettemeyer. I live in Kedron, Montana.
We can't hear her either. Hold on, Lois. Microphone, tip it up maybe? Tip the microphone up closer to you?
Okay. Thank you, Lois.
Okay. To the city council, as you know, we have been multiple attempts to meet and compromise this ordinance for SDRs, to keep it legal, on legal terms regarding property rights. Today, we are still working on violations as followed. The ordinance is in violation of the Georgia Computer Data Privacy Act dated June 14th, 2023. Consumer consent needs to be approved, okay? One person has to be appointed to control the data, 72-hour notice if the data has been breached, and there is a fine if there's any violation to this act, okay? Also, the intelligence right. James Madison, author of the Constitution, believes that property encompasses not physical assets but one's ideas and personal liberties. The ordinance targets with extreme restrictions and fines our personal liberties given to the homeowner and the right to rent their property, whether it be short-term or long-term, by Georgia law, creating hardships to the residents and taking away their income and property rights. We asked the elected officials here and the council, okay, if they can revise and compromise these extreme revisions. This ordinance just addresses a scapegoat for a situation in smoke rise that has not really been resolved. I mean, a long-term rental could happen again, and the subleasing has to be addressed in long term. It has really nothing to do with short-term rentals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next?
Next to speak is Rebecca Thomas.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Thomas. I live off of the Hip Pocket Road neighborhood. I'm also going to be talking on short-term rentals today. I've owned and operated my short-term rental coming up on three years now. My rental's a mother-in-law suite that's attached to my home. And I am understanding of the need to have some form of code in place for short-term rentals. But after reviewing the current draft, I do believe that there are three big proposals that need some revision within the current proposal. And I'm going to start from the most important to least important for myself. The most important for me is the requirement for all parking to be off-street. With my short-term rental being attached to my home, and with my home having an itty-bitty Peachtree City driveway, it's impossible for guests, my family, and my friends to be able to all park in the driveway. Currently, my guests have parked on the street directly to the left of my driveway. I've had no issues, no complaints from neighbors. And for me, I really don't see the difference between a paying guest, a future teenager, friend, or myself parking on the street. So I do think the requirement for parking to be off-street needs revising. The second is the cost for the application fee and the renewal. The current proposal is $400 for the application fee and $300 for the renewal fee each year. This seems a little bit excessive, especially for someone who rents an attached unit and not a whole-home unit. Currently, I looked up at Atlanta what they do, and they charge its short-term rental owners $150 for both the application fee and the renewal fee. I hope that this can be reviewed and altered, especially for those of us who own and operate a room out of our primary residence, rather than a whole-home at short-term rental. And I know that initially, the city proposed regulation light, similar to Atlanta, which we were fine with, but the fee of 400 and the annual 300 renewal, again, just seems a little bit excessive. And then the third thing that, when I was reviewing, I was like, whoa, this is a little wild, is the guest register. And the current proposal states that we have to keep record for three years of every guest that comes. So we have to keep track of their name, their current residence, their address, and the license plate number of their vehicle that they're using. And Airbnb is the rental site that I use, keeps record of our guests for us. And so I really don't see the need for the operator of an Airbnb or other short-term rental that uses a short-term rental website to keep this type of record, especially the license plate number. I just feel like collecting this information from our guests would be very uncomfortable and unnecessary. So again, it just seems a little bit excessive. And I do hope that these can be discussed during the text amendment portion in regards to the short-term rental permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next to speak is Eric Shufrow.
Good morning, city council, Peachtree City. My name is Eric Shufrow. I live in McIntosh Corners. I'm here today to talk about lake usage rights. This is not my first time here. The ordinance in particular is 54-48, access and use of Lake Peachtree. In particular, over the last two years, the topic of electric personal watercraft, specifically lightweight ones, the size of paddle boards or less, under 100 pounds, has been somewhat mischaracterized, and I'd like to set the record straight. The ask today is to adjust 54-48 to allow the use of slower-moving recreational watercraft. The e-foil, or the electric surfboard in particular, is generally operated in circles 15 miles an hour or less, maybe 18 miles an hour, but no faster than the boats that are out there today. If we can change these rights, we can give more people in Peachtree City the opportunity to find new ways to recreate. We have pickleball. We've already got other types of things. We amended the ordinances for electric bicycles. I think we should do the same. If you're unaware, today, there are about 80 homeowners who have the right to use Lake Peachtree for pretty much whatever they want, and that access is something that those people have their own control over. Today, it seems reasonable, if they can run e-foils and electric surfboards, that the rest of the city, who pays taxes for the lake, which is now 40,000 people, also have the right to do so. Over the last two years, we polled the great majority of the city of lake users, about 300 people in particular. Of that group, about 90% are in favor of loosening the rules. Nobody is in favor of having high-power boats or wave runners on the lake. That is not the ask today. Today, the ask is to consider an amendment that would remove the horsepower cap, because that's not a good way to measure electric motors anyway, and instead replace it with a speed limit, making it fair, and electric vehicles, as we already expect. That is my ask, and I hope the council will consider that. And if you have any questions about this topic, please reach out to me. I'm a subject matter expert on it. I could share videos and other operational information so that we don't go astray by looking at videos on YouTube. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next to speak is Blake Hayes.
Good morning. Blake Hayes, Double Trace Lane. I saw today that there is going to be a discussion about improvements to the SR 54 and Huddleston intersection after comments were received before a prior council meeting. Unless there was somebody else who contacted the city as well, those would have been my comments. I say that not to get credit, but just to give context about why I'm speaking now. The basic issue with the plans that were proposed for State Route 54 at Huddleston was that there was no provision for right turns out of the Best Buy. As shown, the plans only had a left-turn arrow, which would show a green left-turn arrow, a yellow left-turn arrow, and a red left-turn arrow. Georgia's a civilized state in which arrows mean what they should. A green left-turn arrow only permits left turns, not right turns. And you can't turn right on a red arrow in Georgia. That's what I mean by civilized state. Some other states do let you turn right on red arrows, which is just goofy to me, but whatever. The other alternative, which in my understanding is what GDOT has said would be their preference to bring the plans into compliance, is to install a yield sign on the right turn. And that's where I really want to focus the rest of my time on, because we have that at several intersections across the city, where we have this combination of a yield sign, but also a traffic signal, and what's going on there. The requirements for a yield sign to be installed at a traffic signal is that there has to be a separate right-turn lane, and there has to be an island. It can be concrete, or it can be paint. That's fine, either way. But there has to be something. It can't just be nothing in the middle of the intersection. When you put in a yield sign like that, it's the yield sign that controls the right-of-way, not the signal. So that's important to understand, that it doesn't matter what color the traffic signal is, red, yellow, green, purple. It's the yield sign that controls that separate right-turn lane. This should make sense to anybody who's been down Peachtree Parkway. There's several intersections there that have stop signs and yield signs. And if you're turning right, you don't come to a complete stop unless you have to for safety purposes. It's different. The stop sign controls the main intersection. The yield sign controls the turn lanes. Same thing with traffic signals with yield signs. This has a couple of effects that are important to note. One of them is that you no longer have to stop for right turns on red, because you're not turning right on a red signal. Again, the signals are relevant. You're turning right at a yield sign. All you have to do is yield to conflicting traffic. The second effect that it has is that, unlike the normal rule where left turns yield, a right turn facing a yield sign has to yield, because that's what yield signs mean. GDOT has had problems with installing those islands correctly across the state, not just in our area, but there are a couple places here in the city where it does apply. This would be something where maybe our engineering department can reach out to GDOT. GDOT has a program where they're working to fix this across the state. But, you know, just again, focusing them and telling them like, hey, we have some problems here in our city that can be fixed. An example of those, just outside the city hall here. Next time you turn right out of Willow Bend onto SR 54, you'll notice there's a yield sign. There's no island. That's not compliant. The other way around on that, if you're on Peachtree Parkway going to State Route 74 north out of the city, there's a separate lane, no yield sign.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next to speak is Chris Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Chris Anderson. I live in Burnham Rise, or the Burnham Woods subdivision. And wanted to talk to you, Ms. Madam Mayor and city council, in regard to the short-term rental ordinance that is going to be discussed at the end of the meeting a little bit. The thing that I mostly wanted to discuss is that the smoke rise incident that was deplorable raises a question on how to prevent this kind of thing from happening. The city council dug into and has really investigated, looking at implementing an ordinance that would help prevent that type of thing from happening. And the city staff has done a lot of work, along with the city manager, to put together an ordinance that would help to prevent that from happening. In the commission meeting that we had just the other, not long ago, the county commission meeting, by the city staff's own admission, the current ordinance would not prevent an incident like that from happening again. In fact, what this ordinance would do is control legitimate STRs that are out there already and would provide, actually cause more harm or difficulty to the community and would not solve the problem in general that we have already with that, with that kind of thing that happened at smoke rise. I want to say, if the city council were doctors, were surgeons, and took on the Hippocratic oath, first do no harm, you would recognize that implementing this ordinance does more harm than it does good. It doesn't solve the situation that actually came about, because it's not legally possible to do that because of property rights of long-term renters and what they do. The short-term rental that is out there is providing a great service, and it's not reasonable, rational, or logical to implement an ordinance like this. I came across it platform, thinking about decision-making and thinking about whether it is reasonable, rational, or logical. And when you look at the ordinance and you look at the STRs that are out there right now, the ordinance is not reasonable, it's not rational, and it's not logical based on what we have. There is no data points, other than that I know of, and I think that you can look and see, that would logically say that STRs in this community have done something that need to cause it to be controlled.
Your time has expired.
Thank you. Next, please.
Last person to sign up to speak is Iris Owens.
Good morning. I'm Iris Owens, president of Fayette County Board of Realtors. Speaking on behalf of the Point and...
Excuse me, where do you live?
I live in Cowina County. I'm the president of the Fayette County Board of Realtors, and we have been...
Ma'am, can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. We had been brought in and asked to share information as it relates to private property rights. The STR would in fact, and it does, would in fact infringe upon private property rights. An individual who purchases a home has the right to utilize their home for what they would like to use it for, within reason, of course, as long as it's not illegal activity, or they're not selling, you know, fixing cars in the yard and that sort of thing that brings down property values. However, in this situation, the STR is asking for a lot of information, i.e. having someone do a background check, fingerprint checks. If you are getting a regular business license in Peachtree City, are you also getting that, or you ask for a background check, fingerprint check, and this is your home, or this is a home that you have purchased as investment to do business here in the city of Peachtree City? So the concerns also are that each time we come to a meeting, they come to a meeting, and it comes back, something has changed and something has not been addressed in the ordinance that has, when it comes back out. So I just want you to be mindful that, first of all, unless you are a licensed Realtor, you do not have the ability to check people, or get information, or list information about someone's home without their permission. So putting someone's home out there with their information, even when we book and go someplace on a vacation, and we have used Airbnbs, I'm sure many of us in this room have, do you think about the fact that someone's information is out there and that you're safe in that place? Because if you weren't, you wouldn't use it. So be mindful of putting out all this information about the home where it's listed when it's not in use. That puts the property owner and the property at risk for individuals doing malice or doing things that shouldn't be happening. Peachtree City is a wonderful place to live. I've lived here for 20 years. And it's no place like it on the planet. And I totally understand why we want to protect what it is and how it is. But we also need to be mindful that as a property owner, when I buy a home, I buy a home to do what it is that I would like to do with it, again, within reason. And so those businesses that have been operating...
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
...is fair that they would pay a business tax fee, but nothing else beyond that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll get to work session discussion items. A, presentation of recreation master plan, Cindy Benacci of CPL. While you get ready, I'll just mention that we've been at this for about a year now. Peachtree City hired CPL in 2023 to create a new recreation master plan that would guide us forward for the next 10 years and beyond. The previous recreation master plan was to cover 2007 to 2011. So we haven't done this in a long time. It's long overdue, and I'm excited about this project. And what we're going to look at today is a draft document. And what we'll do from here is decide what Peachtree City wants going forward. Thanks for being here.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, city council, staff, citizens. Thank you all for having us. We're going to walk through kind of the final steps of the process today with you. We'll educate citizens about kind of what we've done to date and some decisions that we need to make going forward to finish out the project. Just to start off, this has been a great project. Peachtree City is unique. It is one of the most unique cities that I know I've ever worked with, probably Mac as well. What you offer, what you have here, it is precious. It is truly a gem. So we're going to walk through. I'm going to carry part of the presentation. Mac's going to cover the other. We'll probably both try to talk at the same time, so bear with us with the mic, as he may interject into what I'm saying. But here we go. This is our team. As the mayor said, we were contracted by the city last fall, last September, to produce the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We do, our firm is CPL, and we do a lot of projects with Peachtree City. So the city is familiar with the work that we do here with you guys. But Kevin McCumber is our principal in charge. That's me. I've served as the project manager for the project since the beginning. Matt Kane is here with me. Mac has been doing this a very long time. And he has served as a senior advisor and a parks designer on the project. And then we had Bob Betts also serve as a Parks and Rec specialist when we got into our gap analysis and needs assessment. Today, we're going to cover the overview of the master plan process. And we're going to walk through three major questions or phases of the project. What do you have, which includes your inventory, programs, staff, funding, those things? What do you want, which includes the public input survey, the events we went to, stakeholder interviews, meetings, notes that we've taken throughout the process from citizens, emails, anything like that that we received? And then the final phase of the project is actually, what do you need? Once we look at what do you have and what do you want, what do you actually need here in Peachtree City? Where are the gaps? So we do a gap analysis, a needs assessment, and then the final part of that is to look at cost estimates when we write our final recommendations. This is an overview of the master plan process. If you don't mind, I'm going to look at my sheet, because I don't have my lady glasses on. Again, three phases. What do you have, which includes the initial site investigation? We went to all the sites you have here in Peachtree City and did a detailed inventory of what you actually have. This is facilities, programs, where your funding is coming from, services you're offering. Then, when we look at these inventories, we identified what was available to the residents of Peachtree City in the way of recreational activities here within the city. The team did not assess offerings provided by other private or public entities. We were tasked with looking at specifically Peachtree City, making our decisions and our recommendations on what Peachtree City has. You can look outside of Peachtree City, but when you weigh in on offerings provided by others outside the city, those are things that are typically outside your control. So we wanted to focus on the things that Peachtree City can actually control within the city. Previous reports and studies were reviewed, old plans. The mayor referenced the previous master plan, the 2007 to 2011 plan, which was the last one done by the city. We looked at all important data, the inventory, any future projects, and we identified those from those reports. What do the residents want? Citizen information was gathered by means of an online survey, which went really well. We'll talk about that in a minute. We did questionnaires, citizen emails, council meeting notes, stakeholder interviews. We met with staff on a regular basis, city administrators, and other elected officials, which also played a role in our stakeholder interviews. So what does Peachtree City actually need? To determine where gaps exist in city services, programs, and facilities, our team used the city parks inventory, we'll talk about that in a minute. Mac's got it rolled up here, to develop a benchmark gap analysis based on national NRP standards for a city similar in population size to Peachtree City. Obviously, there is not a benchmark for a city like Peachtree City, because you are unique. So we use those as just a placeholder, a starting point, and then, and we work from there. We worked with staff, again, to adjust these standards based on research, analysis of existing community input, reviewing local demographics, stakeholder input, the public input survey, and again, staff. The new Peachtree City standards were applied against the existing city inventory, and an assessment was developed to show a list of needs for the city. Again, this first phase of what do you have is an inventory. Mac, if you want to display this, this is a document we create that we give to the staff. So this will live within the department. It can be updated as things are added, removed, replaced, repaired. But this shows every facility, every park, every facility in Peachtree City, how many there are, its current condition. It's pretty long. So we just wanted to say, we've got a simplified copy up there, but this is everything you have, which is quite a lot, which is quite a lot to be proud of. But it's also quite a lot to maintain, operate, and things like that. So we want to put that into context, so.
All right.
Peachtree City's got more recreational facilities than any other city I've ever worked with. But the purpose for this, he gets it in Excel form, so he can update it anytime you have this forever. It can be updated when you build a new park, when you demolish something, when you replace something. All he has to do is open this up, find the park, the park's across the top, as a condition for each facility. Facilities are listed on the far end. You find that section, and you just update it. So in 10 years, when you do this again, you just have this.
This is a template, because this is empty.
No, that one, I'll tell you, that's just part of this thing. This is the whole thing right there.
Is it filled in?
Yes.
I see.
Filled in. You can't see it, because of the numbers all the way down.
Thank you.
What you're looking at is that corner right there. That's an example, so I can talk to you about it.
Thank you.
Mac, is that done on an Excel spreadsheet?
On an Excel spreadsheet. We will give it to y'all in Excel, so you can load it in your computer and use it forever.
Thank you.
So you want, the next consultant, you don't have to pay him to do this.
Okay. What do you want? The first thing we're going to talk about today is the input we got from a combination of stakeholder interviews and what we call the open responses from the survey. At the end of your survey, you had an open-ended question that allowed people to write whatever their main concern was. So we took those...
So we took those responses along with stakeholder comments we got and we summarized these. So the needs for parks that came up, trails, walking, hiking, jogging, nature trails and greenways, maintenance and appearance, playgrounds, restrooms, trails, bicycle trails, multipurpose, natural areas, park wifi and picnic shelters. Those were the top responses in that category of needs for parks. With parks, with sports and recreation, the, the number one thing that was mentioned was cricket.
Wow.
Yeah. So cricket, cricket got the most responses. And then of course pickleball finished right behind in second. And then indoor, outdoor swimming pools, tennis courts, recreation center or gymnasium, sand volleyball courts, more multi-use athletic fields, skate park, bike park and turf lacrosse fields. Then on the last category of community, which kind of ties into your special events, farmer's market, theater performances, Fourth of July parade and fireworks, food, drink festivals, sponsor tournaments to generate revenue, movies in the park, arts and crafts festivals and concert series. So all of these are what was mentioned. It doesn't necessarily highlight if this is what they want, what they're already using, but it gives you an idea of what's on people's mind and what they're doing, so. The next part of the what do you want is the survey. So our survey goals were to receive Mac's input through the survey, which we worked on those questions, drafted those questions. The goal of any survey that we do is to keep the response time to under 10 minutes. Typically, if the response time is over 10 minutes, people will get what they call survey fatigue and they'll just stop and never finish the survey. So we try to keep it under 10 minutes, which we did. Your average response time was eight to nine minutes, so that was perfect. We received 2,431 responses and that is 6% response rate over a six-month period. No duplicates, representation across all demographics. So again, we launched December 1st of 2023. We promoted, our first kickoff was the hometown holiday. We used the website, Facebook, social media, facility posters, newsletters, email distribution. We tried to get it out any way that we possibly could. And then the survey ended, it ran for five months and ended May 1st. And again, the total response rate was 2,431, which is 6.4% of the population, which is one of the highest that I, I know.
Quick, quick question, could I ask? I see that you've got about a 6% response rate of 2,431 people. Is there any demographic information on that, particularly on age and, and the like? To know that, you know, we have, what, almost 40,000 people in this city? You know, that's, uh, how many are really adults versus little children? So I'm sure that that's got to be taken into account.
I wanted to explain that to you that.
Oh, okay.
You've got.
Sorry, I'm a straight man. I'm just bringing up the stuff so you can lead in.
You've got well over 38,000 people in the community. 6% of your citizens returned surveys. That's what the 6% is. It's against the total population. And the reason that's important and certain, doing public input surveys, even in polls, when they do political polls, they look for what they can claim as statistically valid, which means you have to get enough returns relative to the number of people you're seeking to be able to say that's a fair representation of that group of people. 5% is the, 3% to 5% is what you need. We got 6%, which means that the, that tells us that the results of the survey are pretty accurate compared to what the general population really thinks. Now, as far as the demographics, we know there are various, there are different ethnic groups, there are different ages, there are different genders, you know, every, and, and in recreation, you know, two genders, they have different desires for different sports, lots of different changes. So we, we go to the, we put in the survey so that we can tell those breakdowns as far as we've taken the survey. For example, 71% of those surveys were female. The rest of them were male. Well, we know that girls like one kind of sport and boys like another kind of sport. And it's not fair to, for the survey to be 71% rated toward what, what girls like. So we go back and we, we use the demographics to rate it 50/50. And then that's what we use to produce our Peachtree standard. And we're going to show you another slide Cindy's going to show you to in a minute. The difference in ages, what ages, the different ages. And we're using that as an example for you to see that, but we did it with age, we did it with ethnic groups and we did, you have non-residents that took the survey as well. We kind of pushed them to one side because we want to know what the citizens think and that's who we were targeting. And it was the 2,431 citizens that we targeted or that we used. So the, the survey is, finding out what people want is the hardest thing in the world. It's the hardest part of this process to get enough people to answer and tell you and be straightforward with you. So that survey is extremely critical and that's why we, we put a lot of strength on that. Now, Mayor, while I'm standing up here, you said it looks like it's blank. Well, a lot of it is blank because you have one park and it only has three facilities. So those are the cells that are filled in.
Thank you.
Every park, there's a list of facilities. It must be 50 over there. You don't have that many in every park. But if you follow it across, you'll find out where they are in each park.
Thank you.
That's what, but we, we had to do it that way. It's a, it's a grab.
Yeah, and along what Mac was talking about, as far as the demographics that you asked about, for this survey, when we rake weighted the data and we looked at the demographics, everything was pretty much on point with the respondents of the survey. The only thing that we were missing, and I think I've shared this with you before, was hearing for the youth. We had proposed putting the survey out into the school system and that was not received. And so we're missing that fragment of the population. We typically target fourth graders and 10th graders. Fourth graders are getting into sports and getting active. They're the next Michael Jordan, you know, they're the next big thing. By 10th grade, they have other interests. They're not involved in the high school sports anymore and they're looking for other things to get involved in. So that was one piece of the demographic that we don't feel like was a statistically valid response. But we did get responses from that group and we did get lots of responses from parents with children. We just didn't hear from the children themselves. Okay? So this is just a copy of the survey. These were the questions that were asked and just gives you an idea of how they were laid out and gives you an example of some of the, the products and the data that came out of the survey. This survey is available to you. I know that we were provided a link with login information. You can actually go into the survey data and filter it by those demographics. You can look at males, females, age groups, ethnicity, all of those things and filter the data. So if you want to look at a specific part of the population, you can filter that data and look at it. But that data belongs to you guys, so.
Could I, could I ask one question?
Yes.
So on the, all of the charts that you've presented and the graphs that you have in the, in the report here, basically on pages, I'm trying to get your page numbers, 45 through whatever, those incorporate all of the responses for all 2,431?
Yes.
Regardless of whether they're citizens?
Yes, those in that book capture every one of them, yes.
Okay, so where in your evaluation did you take the people who don't reside in Peachtree City out of the mix?
Yes.
To eliminate their bias or their input?
Their, their, their input was very small. And if you look in the charts, you can actually see the breakdown of resident, non-resident. There's a chart that breaks out resident, non-resident.
No, I know what she's asking.
Yeah, I know, yeah, there's 221 of them or something.
The, the ones that you're looking at, the charts in there.
Hold the microphone just a little closer.
The ones you're looking at, those are the full survey. That's to show you how many people answered and what their answers were. When we got down to figuring out what the Peachtree standard should be, we did that rate weighting in the office and figured it out. But that doesn't show in the report.
Okay.
And if you want that in the report, we can put it in there. It's enormous.
No, I don't want it in the report. I want to know what the citizens want. The citizens are the ones that are going to have to pay for this.
That's right. That's right. And the, and when we explain to you what the Peachtree standard is, we'll show you that we, we use the citizens to do that. But we also went through and looked at those demographics to say, wait a minute, we need to rate this a little different so that the answer should be a little different to be fair to all the demographics in the, in the group. And that, like I said, that's a massive piece of work. But that was used to develop the standard. We're going to show you in a minute.
Mac, I have another quick question. You went through a lot of data. I've looked at the report and I see what you're putting up here. What was your confidence level of the data that you got that gives a good representation of what the citizens want?
Well, that's a really good question. When I look at all the other parks, recreation master plans I've done, usually you can tell if a survey or a group of people are about the same as everybody else. For example, every survey I've ever done, number one's trails. Always ends up number one.
Number one what? I didn't hear you.
Trails, trails and greenways always ends up at top every single time. Well, it did for y'all as well. I was wondering if that was going to happen because you have such a fantastic trail system now. Why would anybody want more trails? That was my thought. But even still, that is number one. That's what people were asking for. Some of the surprises I saw here, cricket. Cricket was a surprise, but when we did John's Creek, cricket was there as well. Now, every other city I've done, cricket didn't even come up. But we found out there's a large population of people that live in that area that want to play that sport, that took that survey on purpose. They, they heard, they deliberately took the survey to make sure that it got in there. And I assume that's probably what's happening here. Pickleball, it does always end up pretty close to the top. So that's pretty standard. So when I looked at these and we're going to, we've got a list of the recommendations to, and I'll be able to address that a little better when I talk about those. Because there are a couple of them that I went, ooh, I haven't seen that before.
Well, the confidence level is a calculation, statistical calculation. I just wondered if you had an overall one or not individual ones, but just a, an overall confidence level on the data that you got?
The confidence levels comes from the fact that it's statistically valid.
Okay.
And not only is it a 5%, it's a 6%. That's, that's rarely do we get that far on a, on a survey like that. So your, your information is good. Our interpretation and what we show, even when I said there's some prizes there, but that's what they said. We need to show them what they said. And then from that, we make basic decisions as to whether you want to follow that lead or not. That, that's y'all's job as the public officials. But I'll explain that a little better when we get to that, that slide.
Thank you, Mac.
And one of the other things about this survey is we made sure it couldn't be duplicated. You know, when people put in their information, if you tried to take it again, it would pop up and say, we're sorry, you've already completed the survey. So that was one way to control that as well, so.
The 2,471.
Microphone, please. Microphone, please.
Each one of those surveys is one unique person. I've had surveys where we didn't have that ability and when I went and we reviewed the data, somebody took it 25 times because they wanted to get a soccer field. So we made sure that nobody can skew these surveys by doing multiple entries.
And same thing, the demographics. When we did rake weight and compare the demographics to the demographics of the server, they were very much in line, very, very, very close. Except, like I said, the youth was the, kind of the one demographic that we were missing.
So basically, what I'm hearing is that you're very confident that the data that you've got accurately represents what the citizens want in this community only?
Yes.
Is that, don't, don't, you know, is that, is that the right statement to make?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Let me go back. There we go. Okay, so this is one of the slides that I put up and I've shared this with you before. This was a question that we asked just to, just to inquire as, as a funding option for parks and recreation. And this is the question asking if Peachtree City were to continue, were to consider offering and, or charging an annual household fee to invest back into parks, would you support it and what amount would you serve? So you can look at this and you can say, oh, wow, look at all that blue. All that blue doesn't support a fee. But all the other colors, which represent more than half of the respondents, said they would actually agree with at least a $50 fee per year per household. So I know we've talked about that before. I just wanted to bring that back up again, that that's some of the data that you can use to make decisions going forward with funding. And you can actually poll your citizens again if that's something you want to pursue, but you at least have some data that says, wow, at least half of the respondents would support that option. All right, Mac, I'm going to turn it over to you.
You got to do it quickly.
I'll do it.
Can you hear me? I'll make a quick comment about the slides Cindy just showed you. There was a question as to how you would like to see it funded. And SPOLOST was at the top of the list by far more than anything else. So that told me that your citizens are comfortable with the SPOLOST. So it should pass whenever it comes up, but you never know. What you're looking at there, that slide, is when we get these answers back and we count the number of people that answered trails versus the 2431 slot, 31 respondents, how many of them picked trails? And then we rate them down and those were the top 10 choices. Now, on the survey information that you'll see in, in the book, you'll see charts that show actually exactly how many numbers and how many people voted for, or selected each one of them. On your recreational facilities and greenways, this is what your citizens say they want to do. They like trails and hiking and jogging and nature trail. That's number one, seems to always be. Number two is bicycle trails and multi, multipurpose hard surfaces. There's a difference in the soft surface trail and hard surface trail. So typically, people love the soft surface trails for walking and jogging. They like hard surface trails for biking. Y'all have a tremendous golf cart path system, which is a hard surface trail. They want an event lawns and festival fields. That was a surprise to me, that they want those. Usually, that's a little further down the line. An amphitheater. Again, I was surprised at that one because y'all have an incredible amphitheater here. But as we dug into it, we realized it was not another big amphitheater. It was a smaller, more natural, less, I mean, amphitheater where they can have small events.
Mac, to be clear, this is what our citizens want. This is what we want.
This is what your citizens voted, selected. Participating in or want to see more of. They want an outdoor swimming pool. Thought y'all had one, but they want another one. Playground, this one too was a surprise because y'all have a tremendous number of tot lots throughout your, your city, but they asked for playgrounds for six and 12-year-olds. Now, the selection is tot lots, six and 12, eight and 10. We give those choices and that was the number six choice. An indoor recreation center, gymnasium, multi-use courts. It's kind of a sports complex building. This is a building they're talking about. Canoe and kayak launches. I assume that one is a result of y'all having these large, beautiful lakes here and people want access to them. Swimming pool, indoor this time, not an outdoor. And then football across multipurpose fields. Now, let me explain the difference between a event lawn and a multipurpose field. A multipurpose field is where I could go out and have an organized game, a competitive game. It's flat, it's big enough, I can mark it off. Or you can have a car show or any other event you want to have. You can have on that particular multipurpose field. An event, festival field, you can have all those things, but you cannot play competitive sports. You can get out there and kick around a soccer ball, play football, but you can't line it off and it's not level and it's not fair to each team because it's not even. You can't have competitive sports on an event lawn. Those were the top 10 choices by your citizens. Top 10 passive activities. These are things that the citizens of your community do, enjoy doing and want to continue doing more of. Number one was walking and hiking, obviously. You have this incredible system here. Canoe and kayaking, surprised for me to see it that high up. But again, from, I think we've heard today some talking about the lake, people loving that lake. That's probably why that's up that high. Arts and crafts, I was surprised at that one. Biking, I was not. Cooking classes, that's pretty typical. Theater performances. Jogging and running is further down than I thought it would be. Nature study, well, excuse me, nature study areas. Y'all have several really. Y'all have several really wonderful facilities here. Apparently, people want more access to it. Dog walking activities, that's usually much higher. People love dog parks. You need probably two or at least three here, one in the north, one in the south because it's so far apart. And gardening, gardening being a community garden. These are the things that people say they enjoy doing, that they want to do, and they want to do more of. Special events. We listed all the special events that we knew of, gave them some other choices down at the bottom. These are the ones that came out. Farmer's market hit the top. Apparently, y'all do an incredible job on your Fourth of July. People love it, they enjoy going to it. They want to see more food and drink festivals that they can attend. The holiday events that you're holding, it's scoring real good. The Fred Brown Amphitheater is doing, people go there, must enjoy it. They want to attend craft festivals. I'm not sure what the shack rag is, but the arts and crafts is what they're talking about. They want to get in there and have parts in that. A concert series, that's either outdoors or in, or at the amphitheater, whatever. The Fall Festival is, is popular, and the hometown holiday. That's the order in which your citizens made those choices, the top 10. Now, there are probably 20 choices, but those are the top 10. Next one. Now, this is where I want to show you, this is an example of one of the rate weightings. We did a lot of other rate weightings. The top 10 citizens total, and this is weighted, gender-weighted, male, female, so that we have a 50/50. Pickleball was number one. When I say active activities, this is what they want to see built. This is not what they're actually doing. This is the, these are the ones that people say you're lacking here. Pickleball. Golf was a surprise. Y'all have wonderful golf courses, but golf was a little surprise to me, but maybe that's because you don't have a public course.
That's right, no public.
Soccer was not a surprise. You have a, you have a wonderful place here, but probably more people trying to play than can, can use it. Summer camps, I've never seen that one before. Baseball, softball, that's typical. Basketball is typical, tennis. Swim team, usually it's higher than that because, because girls tend to be more in the swim teams. And so it really kind of pushes it up. Disc golf is about where it ought to be, and mountain biking is about where it ought to be. These are the things that your citizens want. So then when we rate weighted it back to the ages, if you look at what the six to 17-year-olds want to do, volleyball hit the top. Then skateboards and bikes, football, sand volleyball and swim team. When we went to, we rate weighted the ages 18 to 25, indoor soccer hit the top. Then pickleball, mountain biking, skateboarding and soccer. Your ages 26 to 45, which are probably most of the people in this room, except me, soccer. Soccer hit the top. Well, yeah, the parents are, are asking for this with their children is what, what's happening. Summer camps, baseball, softball, basketball, swim team, the typical recreational facilities that they want. Ages 45 to 65, pickleball. We all know why that's there. Because the seniors, older folks enjoy pickleball because it's easier to play than tennis. I can't run all over tennis court anymore, but I could run on a pickleball court. Pickleball, golf, disc golf, tennis and mountain biking. Seniors like me, 65 and older, pickleball, golf, those are easy. Others, there was a list of things that, that we just said that they picked a lot of other things that we didn't show, tennis and disc golf. That's how it breaks down, and if you look at those and then compare them back to the top 10 that everybody picked, you see how age makes a difference in the activities people like to participate in. Same thing is true with gender. Same thing can be true with the ethnic groups because you have, people come from different cultures. That's part of why cricket is rising, because we're getting more people immigrating to our country and living in our country who come from countries that have a British influence, where cricket is, you know, it's like baseball over there. So that's why we do the rate weighting, to make sure that when we give you these recommendations, we're giving you something that's fair for the population as a whole, not because one particular group answered the questions in the, in the survey more than anybody else. Then we get to what's called the gap analysis and recommendations. This is really the meat and potatoes of the whole, whole thing. This is, comes from this chart you see here, the inventory. On the left, you will see a list of the facilities that were mentioned in the survey. The yellow is the number of those facilities you already have today in your city. The next one is what we know is needed for today to meet the typical needs of the city's requests, and you're pretty close. The next one is how many you're going to need in five years and then how many you're going to need in 10 years. That last line is the most important line. It's where we go through this and say, okay, they add six, they need 10, you got to build four. That final list over there is the list of facilities that we have determined from the public input, surveys and all of our studies, is these are the things you need to build. Now, those two, those three middle lines that are in white, those are your Peachtree standards. Those Peachtree standards, I say, to explain that, NRPA gives you what they believe is the standards for a city this size. We adjust those standards based on what we learn from you, what we learned from the surveys, what we know ourselves from being down here, and we set those standards, and that's your standards. Those are, you know, we're, we're willing to hear you say, okay, you say we need six, we don't, we need eight. But that can come from y'all as the input that we would get from you. Because it's your city, you have the right to say what you really want. This is what the surveys say, and this is what our research is telling us. The next step beyond this is that we will take that list by the numbers. You see the numbers over there, one through whatever, and I'll write a description of each one of those required, those recommendations that tell you what it is, where it should go, if there's a space somewhere here in the city to put it, what kind, whether it should be lighted or not, a complete description of each one of those, and those become your final recommendations. Those final recommendations are then listed by those numbers and a price is put on every one of those development.
And Mac, to be clear, those recommendations are coming from you. This is...
Coming from our team.
Correct. So for example, let's look at number 50 says, I know it's hard to read, it says, community garden, 2024 supply is one.
That's what you have.
That's what we have. 2024 need five? Number 50. I just chose that randomly.
No, that's wrong.
Oh, okay, bad example. Let's look at...
You picked the one that...
Yeah, pick a different one.
I will pick a different one.
I don't think that's right.
Actually...
Look at pickleball.
Pickleball. What number?
22.
Yep, 22.
22. Pickleball court, six, and I assume that's at Braylon.
That's the ones you had, right?
Thank you. 2024 need 12, but by 2029, we anticipate 14, and 2034 16, so that means our...
Based on the growth of your population.
Our current gap is 10. All right, we're going to talk more about that one, don't worry.
Now, now, Mayor, Mayor, that's what our statistics tell us, and that's what's typical. However, because this is your city and you have a group of people that want more than that, that's where y'all tell us...
Got it.
Okay, we like the 10, but we want 12. And that becomes the final recommendation, which is what you're here for.
From, from you. 10 becomes the final recommendation?
No, 10 is from us, y'all can change it based on what you know.
Got it, thank you.
Good.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, that 16 number is typical, and probably pickleball will tell you, for most tournament facilities, 16 courts is about the minimum for a competition-type complex. So that's a starting point. You may need more than that, you may decide you need 24. That is something we're open to, but we're just saying this is a starting point to decide where your gap is today, if you want to have one of those competition facilities here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we could, we could keep moving. This is wonderful.
But we do want y'all to go through these, each one of them, and, and give us feedback. And while, while your own pickleball, pickleball's kind of a new game, so we're still catching up with the standards.
We are.
Most of the, the communities I go to don't want this many pickleball courts. Some communities do, and I assume this one may be one of them.
Okay.
Next slide. The initial recommendations, these are the recommendations that we wrote based on what we learned. The first one is your passive facilities. These are things that you need to, to build, or that we recommend that you, you expend your money on. For example, in the survey, you have trails at the top and then you have jogging down here somewhere else. Will those really go together as one recommendation? Because they're done on the same facility. So we recommend that you expand your parks and greenway trail system, which you've already done a master plan to do so. We recommend that you do a farmer's market, not a drive-up and everybody open your truck, but you put up a permanent facility, a building or shelter or harbor or something. As a permanent facility, it could be a farmer's market and can be used for other things. You need some more open event festival fields or a better one, that, that's big enough that can handle even the rainstorms. Add some canoe and kayak docks to your lake. A new recreation center, which would include an arts and craft place, a cooking class, theater performance facilities within that building. It would also include basketball courts. Additional dog park, probably where one is, you need to put the other one in the north or the south, but they don't need to be close together. A small amphitheater, and then go in and plant shade trees. You know what's the most important thing in a ball field? Shade, shade and shade. Those are the three most important when you're watching a ballgame, so plant shade trees. We heard that a lot in your, in your ballfields. That's your passive. Your active activities, pickleball courts, you need to build pickleball courts to a tournament level. Because if you want a, a means to make some extra revenue to support your park system, tournaments are great ways to do it. Not only do you collect revenue for the tournament itself, but the people coming in, staying in your hotels, your restaurants, a lot of money comes in through tournaments. We think you need to turf some of your soccer fields, mainly in order to bring in tournaments. A sports complex, which goes along with number five on the other side. Build a sports complex with gymnasiums that also includes these arts, crafts, cooking and theater performances. Cricket field overlay. Now, the reason I say overlay, one of the biggest challenges to build a cricket field is it's so big. It takes a lot of land, and land's expensive. We figured out a way to, to put soccer fields and cricket fields together, and you have a permanent cricket pitch. That's one of the challenges when they try to play, and they have to have these temporary cricket pitches, and they're not that good. Or they play on a half-court, play on a baseball field, which is a quarter court for them. They play on a big round oval. So that's a quarter court, so they don't get to play the full game and enjoy it. So you can put that cricket field overlay, have a permanent cricket pitch and still have soccer fields all around it. An auditorium, that's a big one, but. An outdoor swimming pool that goes along with an auditorium. Turf some of your youth baseball fields in order to bring in tournaments. You only have nine-hole, a nine-hole disc golf course. It would be better if you had 18 full holes. Additional restrooms throughout your parks, especially as trail heads to your, your path system, and then maintenance and storage buildings. Those two last things we heard a lot about, the need for those. Support issues. These are the things that we recognize from our studies that people say need to be addressed in maintenance. You got a lot of delayed maintenance. You need to improve your maintenance, improve your staff, or get more staff. And then staffing goes along with that, and updating your facilities. So you see those three things really go together as one of those concerns. Top stakeholder request. Now, when I say stakeholder, that's only the people we interviewed. This is not public. We, we just take, how many was it, 40-something people? It was over 40 people that we interviewed one-on-one and said, tell us what you think are the top requests. Green space, sports complex, aquatic center, arts and performing center. Those were the top four things that came out of those interviews. And that's why those have been fed back into these, these, here, part of it.
And Mac, I've got a question on that before you get off that slide. Given the fact that the citizens of this community have three main things that they do the most, and it's in, comes out of your survey, and we know this too as, as citizens here, which is basically walking around on the path, running, you know, jogging and running, and bicycling, the top three. And I'm looking at this list here, and I don't see expansion of any of those things, other than maybe the expanded greenway trails, possibly. I don't see any other expansions on it. Did I miss something on there?
No, that's, that, that's what that means when I say expand the trail greenways. If you look back into the, those top 10 lists, you'll see every one of those things you're talking about.
Okay.
But when I'm sitting here saying, all right, now what do I tell them to build? Well, you build a jogging trail, and you build a walking trail, and you build a bike track, and those are different. No, they're all the same.
Okay.
They can all go into the same facility. So that's why I lump them together as number one, expand your path, trail, greenway system.
So they're not individually done, they're done on that, number one under online, online survey, park and recreation, passive?
That's right.
Okay, as opposed to the active stuff on the right? Okay, well, thanks, thanks for that explanation.
Because it's not a real competitive sport.
No.
So it, it's considered a passive activity. If it was a competition across country, which you can do in a same place, but there's not a lot of that request. That particular number one covers all those three things you just talked about.
Thank you.
So just to kind of conclude where we are, you guys have been provided, staff was provided with a rough draft of the plan report. We need to get comments based on today's presentation as well as content in that report that, that you guys have looked through. Obviously, it is a rough draft, so we want your comments, so we can take those final comments, put them back into the final report. Once we get those comments in the final report, you've approved our recommendations, you're accepting our recommendations, we'll do plan edits and we'll work through the cost estimate process. You'll get a final report, you'll get a supplemental report as well, which will include the cost estimates and all the numbers. And then we go through the adoption process. So that's kind of where we are right now. This is our first opportunity to kind of give you all an update and hear feedback back from you, to apply to the plan. Once we get the go from you and staff, then we will finish out the report. We will be providing you with an updated draft in the next few days. The one you have is kind of obsolete, it's kind of been moved on at this point. So you'll get a new draft with all the updates in it, that's also a very much condensed version of what you have, because there was a lot in what you saw in the rough draft that we have now removed, and more that we've added in to just kind of support the content. But you'll get that in the next few days, I guess sometime next week at the latest. And then we'll, we'll let you kind of peruse through that, give us comments based on today and that document, and then we'll move forward with, with finishing out the final report. So...
I want to explain to you what the supplemental report is. The master plan is what we've been talking about here that gives you the recommendations. When I do a cost estimate of everything that's going to cost to do it, as if we did it in one day, we typically don't give that to the public. We put that in a supplemental report, give it to you, and you decide whether you want the public to see that or not. We also put in that report, land acquisition recommendations. That's also a very sensitive subject that you don't want to just hand out to the public. That's why we put it in two reports. If you want it in one report, we'll put it in one report. I've learned to do that, to give you all that option rather than make that decision myself. So that will be up to y'all.
And we did, I know we're at the conclusion slide here, but we did include the concepts that we've already gone through and created based on initial recommendations, and we're happy to show those real quick, at least pop them up if you'd like us to. If not, we can finish here, but we do have them at the, the back end of the, the PowerPoint.
In the document that I've seen so far, on page 161 of, of...
In the document that I've seen so far, on page one sixty-one of, of three hundred and fourteen, actually. Actually, no, no, it's one fifty-eight, on page one fifty-eight, for example, is a pickleball complex uh, concept plan. Do you have that that you can call up?
I, I can't tell you what order they're in.
I gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm looking at one fifty-eight.
Yeah, this is, um, this is Mead. Um, you'll recognize this is Mead, or this is our version of a, a concept for Mead. Um, you'll see on the far left of the screen, um,
Number three.
We've added a, an exit option and an entry option from Joel Cowan into Mead that's not currently there. This is right next to your composting site. Um, so number three on this is where your composting site is now. And that is what we're proposing, uh, to be your pickleball complex. Um, you can see there's other additions here at Mead, um, the very far right side. Um, people may not realize, but that is a beautiful nature area back there, and we're proposing another nature area, nature center, observation area on the far right side of Mead.
So, uh, just so those who are here for pickleball, and I think there are a lot of you, this proposal includes, and I'm looking at a different, um, slide.
Yeah, I can get to that one. I just wanted to give context since that one popped up first, so.
This is kind of the meat of it and kind of what some of our citizens are here to see. This is a uh, concept plan for twenty-four courts and a building and parking on the corner of Rockaway Road and Highway seventy-four. That's, that's the concept plan that's included in it. Um, and, and the rest of the story at Jim Mead Fields, to have walking paths back into the woods and just respect for the green spaces back there, that's a wonderful part of this. And I just want to make sure that this next round, we're going to give CPL a chance to correct some verbiage in, in the narrative. But I want to make sure that what comes out next, and I hope it's soon, includes, you know, this, so that we can all take a look and we can solicit feedback from our citizens, all the good people who participated so well in the interviews and also in the surveys, want to have a chance to take a look at this and weigh in. Did you remember this or did you remember, you know, whatever?
And we can, we did create a legend for each concept, so you can see why it's, why it's there, what it is and why it's there. Um, so even to go back to this one, um, sorry, I just went the wrong way. Sorry. Um, but this is, this is Mead, um, and this shows the whole site, obviously. We referenced number three as pickleball, but we don't show the actual design there. But this includes a multipurpose indoor facility, that's what's represented by the number two. Um, we've left one of the adult softball fields, we've expanded parking, we've expanded access, we've expanded the cart path access, um, and then we've added all these trails. Um, we've also added a splash pad next to the indoor complex as well. Um, and so this kind of zeros in on that area. The splash pad is represented by number five. Number four, that's just a general floor plan, kind of throwing in the things that we heard about. Through the input process, again, expanded parking, this would sit right across from the proposed pickleball complex. Um, so it would truly be an entire complex with multiple uses, um, right there off Joel Cowan. And again, adding access from Joel Cowan is represented by that number one.
Cindy, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Hold stay on that, that particular slide. Now, that one there. No, go back. That one there.
Alright, that one.
Can you rotate to the right orientation?
Um, this is just how we put it on here. We can change it for the other orientation.
It's fine for what I want to talk about.
It's looking north.
The, uh, the side road there called, um, uh, Mead Field Drive.
Yes.
Uh, if you go to the south of that, you have, um, a location of residential houses called Gates Entry, I believe is what they're called. And I went and measured from the pickleball courts, which would be in the far right bottom of this, of this, uh, picture. There's two or three of those that would be close to and in, within the five hundred foot level of the nearest house. They may need, in this case, to be moved to where the parking is.
Nope, go back.
Go back, stay on that.
There you go.
Those, bottom right-hand side of all the pickleball courts. There's a few there that will be in violation of the five hundred foot rule. And I know a lot of people here in this city are concerned because they're hearing those pickleball sounds. And you've got to be five hundred feet, yeah, partly the bottom two and maybe even the two to the left. Uh, those two there, those four courts, if you could exchange those for parking and put them up to the left, that would be something that would keep it literally closer to six hundred feet away from the homes.
Yeah, and we can definitely.
And we just need to look at that to make sure we're not in violation.
The, the parking that we've provided on site is to maximize parking for pickleball. Obviously, there would be overflow. Um, looking back, sorry, at that. It's, it's not working for me. Yeah, okay. Um, I don't know why it's not working. Okay, there we go. Um, yeah, it's not going. There we go, okay. I didn't do the circle. Um, so you can see, we have parking here for pickleball. Again, we were trying to maximize twenty-four courts. Obviously, we could drop down to twenty courts, twenty-two courts if that's.
I think twenty-four is a good number.
Yeah. Um, but we wanted to maximize parking onsite, so you don't have to cross Mead Drive. Um, but there would be overflow, obviously, directly across the street, um, if, if the, the rest of the improvements are done.
Good, you good with that?
Yeah, I have one more question, a quick one on this. Uh, seating, because there will be, obviously, we'll put in twenty-four courts. It's going to be a tournament location. Uh, we need seating.
Yes.
And is, is that, you can't see it in the drawings here, but I'm sure that there must be some, uh, some seating for those people who want to come and watch a tournament.
Yes, absolutely. So there would be seating there. Um, that number four is a pavilion, again, to host events, activities, it's covered, it's shaded. That number one is what you call your center court, your grand court, your finals match tournament court. Um, so again, this is conceptual.
Okay.
It's just conceptual, but we wanted to show kind of what would fit onsite and tried to maximize the site to provide as much parking and as many courts as we could. Again, working around existing structures onsite as well, so.
Yeah, don't, don't get me wrong, it's definitely a great first start. It does need a little tweaking, in my opinion. I don't know about the rest of the council.
It's a concept.
Yes, it's just a concept.
Is four not, uh, concessions and bathrooms?
Yes, it is, but it's, it's also covered pavilion area as well.
Okay, good, good.
Uh, on the top.
Yeah.
Alright. On the topic, before we leave, uh, Jim Mead Fields.
Yes.
Um, I noticed in a lot of the citizen responses that they talked about credit cards are being used to, um, light the lights. Do you have a recommendation on that? I didn't see one, but maybe I missed it.
I didn't go there. Um, I can definitely offer that. Um, we kind of, I've talked to staff about that.
Alright, I'll leave it in staff's hands then.
Yeah, I, I talked to staff about that and kind of gave them my take on that. Obviously, you guys have to do what works for you. But all of our feedback that we got during stakeholder interviews from the associations and from users are, they do not like that option of having to pay with a credit card, even if it's association use versus private use.
I'll move on. Do you have a, a concept plan for Pebble Pocket?
Yes. And again, these are, this is Braylon. We can spend a couple of minutes on Braylon if you'd like.
Yep.
Um, so if you look to the far left, this is that cricket overlay, the cricket pitch we were talking about. So you can break it apart into soccer fields, uh, youth size, full size, or you can, um, use it as cricket. This is a full-size cricket pitch. Um, the pitch is actually located between what would be your soccer fields, so you don't have the maintenance wearing away of a center of a field or something being used for the pitch. So, and then this is just updating the existing fields, relocating batting, batting cages to the back of the complex. Um, we added, we expanded parking. Um, we added additional shelters, different play structure. We relocated the basketball courts away from the playground area and brought them up to the road. That's typically where we always recommend, um, for basketball.
Looks like the pickleball courts in number six are going to be turned into tennis courts.
Yes, they will go back to tennis courts. I know some people who live nearby would be really happy about that.
There'll be plenty of pickleball courts now, so, that's good.
Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, so yeah, so expanded parking, um, this, you know, Braylon is a great complex. It just, it seemed to us when we visited and we talked as a team that it doesn't really have an identity. And so this kind of gives it an identity. It's a destination place, it has a good appearance, it's a good, um, entry area. Um, so it just kind of gives it a little bit of updating. We didn't completely change anything, there's no like mass changes, but just really maximizing and utilizing the space that's already there.
It's funny you say that about identity. If you go there with a birthday party and order pizza at Braylon Park, they can't find you. No, they don't. Braylon is next to Oak Grove Elementary School, not Braylon Elementary.
Gotcha.
I think council should consider a new name, but we can talk about that another time.
I will leave that up to you guys.
Yeah, it's, it's very confusing.
This just gives, we, we threw in this diagram of, um, cricket, just shows the overlay and how you can have multiple uses in the same space.
Did you get the input in from people who play picket, pickle, excuse me, um, cricket? Did you get their input to, uh, see what they like about this particular design?
They haven't seen this design yet.
They haven't. Okay. There's your first input right there from a cricket player.
Yeah, there's, there's a building out there with bathrooms.
Yes, shade, cover, yeah.
Let me address the cricket real quick. Like I said, Johns Creek, when we did Johns Creek, there was a big cricket contingency. Those two diagrams came out of a a conference I had with all the cricket people together and said, look, they're not going to build you and dedicate all that land to one sport. We've got to mix it with something, and that's where the soccer field idea came from, was from cricket players.
Good.
Of course, everybody wants their own stadium alone with nothing in it. But that was a compromise they're more than willing to make just to get that field. And to add to that, there was one man in the group that said, if Johns Creek will build that cricket field, I'll pay for it.
Wow. We need that here in Peachtree City, too.
I'll, I'll send him down here, because he had.
There we go.
I hear you. We hear you and we know where you live.
Yeah, there, and, and he will probably speak to this as a, as a cricket player. These aren't available. There's not a lot of cricket facilities in metro Atlanta, but there is a big demand for it. I know, even when I was the director back in Snellville, we had flat areas that was just a platform of soccer fields. And they would come every year to host tournaments and big gatherings and rent our cricket fields. And any damage that happened to the sod or whatever, they were always so good about replacing it, doing the maintenance on it. But there is a demand for cricket, and you would be one of the only ones I know in metro Atlanta that has a designated cricket space for cricket.
Can you go back to that?
On the south side, yeah.
Can you go back to Braylon again?
Yes.
Please?
I will try. I can't promise. Oh, went the wrong way. Oh, no.
You're going the wrong way. One more.
There we go, sorry.
Again, I'll ask that same question I did for the pickleball courts. I see that there's no, uh, places to sit or to view, whether it's soccer or cricket or other things there. Is that going to be included in the next go-round as far as seating? And I'm not saying you need a grandstand there, but certainly some type of seating for the people who want to come in and watch the sport.
So typically with soccer, people bring portable chairs, and they bring that with them. Um, and I would recommend that, because, and again, we proposed this, that this could all be turf. This could, this whole complex could be turf. That's up to you guys. But because you do have, you do like some turf fields, this would be a great place to put the turf. Totally up to you. But yes, most viewing for, uh, even baseball now, people bring those portable chairs on their shoulder. You don't have to provide, uh, bleachers and things like that. Now, there are benches and seating areas right off the tennis courts. Uh, you may not assume that they're, but they're little white squares there, so that's actually, um, sitting viewing areas. Um, but yeah, there's plenty of room when we lay these out to add seating if you want that, but this is just purely conceptual.
Okay, thank you.
On the question about permanent seating for soccer. Soccer wears out right down the middle of the field, right at each. So, uh, most parks departments like to rotate the fields, turn them, slide them, both, all kinds of, so that they don't wear out in the same spot. So if we have fixed seating, that often prevents them from being able to do that. That's why we recommend movable seating. That's not true in baseball, that's why you have bleachers. In soccer, it's a different animal.
Anything more on Braylon? I want to get to Pebble Pocket next. Anything more on Braylon?
I'm sorry?
Come up to the microphone so we can hear you.
The batting cages in the very back? They're standard batting cage size for baseball. So we did not design them for cricket, and so if there's a different dimension that's needed for cricket batting cages, we could look at that, but this was just for baseball use. Yeah. Those are the dimensions for baseball.
Let's, any more on Braylon?
Yes, are we not substituting batting cage, uh, acoustic noise for pickleball by having it right next to the neighbor's house?
We'll take a look at noise related to batting cages and the proximity to residential. And last question, then we're going to move on. Yes, microphone, please.
Just one basic question. I, I'm not a cricket player, but is there any concern uh, that the cricket, uh, field overlaps the soccer fields? Because if they're in use, then the cricket players can't play.
There would only be one use at a time. If cricket is in play, then soccer would not be on the fields, yeah. Yeah, it would be scheduled use or league use, something like that, uh, event use.
Which we can, which we can do.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, anything else on Braylon? Let's go to Pebble Pocket.
Okay, skip Kelly Drive.
Oh, Kelly Drive, sure, sure, that's very exciting.
I didn't know what order we would go in, but, so Kelly Drive, um, most of you are familiar, this is right across, um, from the spillway. Um, this is the old community garden site. Um, it's an open lawn, I think, right now. Um, this kind of gives you that extra option for farmer's market, um, event space, a smaller amphitheater. Um, again, this is purely conceptual, it's taking the ideas that we heard and trying to put them on site. All of this can be reoriented with the amphitheater turned the opposite way. Um, I know in talking with staff, instead of having actual market stalls, having one large covered area for the farmer's market rather than individual stalls that they would pull into. Um, having a big open lawn, you can do concerts here, you can do parties, you can do wedding receptions. Um, there's a variety of things, and then connecting the paths through the property as well.
We need, uh, we'll need bathrooms there in our concepts?
Number seven.
Yes, it's number seven.
Oh, good.
You just don't typically put bathrooms next to where you have food service.
And then, uh, we have a connection to the path system?
Yes.
And can you put, do you have a laser pointer on you?
So this is existing, right here?
All the yellows on there.
Yeah, all the yellow, so.
But it goes back to, uh, oh yeah, okay, I love it.
Connection there and then one up here, too.
Flat creek trails.
Yeah, got it. The, um, there's not a lot of parking available there, but maybe I'm just, uh, not realizing the scope of this space.
And, and we looked at that as well. We also looked at proximity for people to walk in. Um, out along the road, um, I can't really see it on this, but we did add, um, right along to the right shoulder, um, of McIntosh Trail, or I guess that, yeah, McIntosh Trail. Um, there is a place along the shoulder of the road where you could add golf cart parking. So golf cart parking could fit out there on that, just along the outside of the entry. Um, but this was, rather than take up a lot of it, this, there's a lot of walk-in options here from the local community that could walk into the site.
I would suggest that, um, first of all, I love the fact that there's a mini little performance venue there. I love the fact that there's a building with bathrooms. I would suggest this is an ideal place for, um, an outdoor play space for children with natural materials.
Yeah, number four.
Number four.
This would be a, um,
There you go.
Yeah, this would be a, um, kind of another, kind of an all-children's ADA access, that kind of thing.
You know, I'm thinking more along the lines of Atlanta Botanical Gardens, I mean Athens, Athens Botanical Gardens, some climbing and other natural playscapes. There are some really amazing examples out there that would blend in with the number nine preserved nature areas, but give kids a place to, a space to play, just as a thought.
Sure.
Cindy, I don't, don't leave that, leave that slide up. I have a question here. Being a military veteran, and same with Mr. Dostadio, we're, we are tightly pushed into having something done from a military standpoint, whether it's Memorial Day or Veterans Day or Purple Heart Day, into, uh, this, right here at City Hall. into this, right here at City Hall. And we end up blocking the roadways with our chairs and things around City Hall.
Yeah.
I've looked at this. I've been crawling all over this community garden. And I would love to be able to take a corner someplace to put some flagpoles.
Absolutely.
And some memorial monuments honoring those people who have served in the military, plus those people who have died in the military. Put a little bit of memorial, maybe in one of these corners, maybe over here or over here, and do something like that in addition to what you've already done here.
I love that so much. What if we put that in place of four, right there where everyone is?
That would certainly be fine, too.
And then integrate a play space, as I mentioned before, back in the number nine area.
Yeah, and I like that. And that was a good suggestion, Mayor.
Mike, did you get that?
Just it gives us, gets us out of the roadway here at City Hall.
Okay.
And gives the veterans a little bit of recognition and having their own memorial parks so that they want to have some, some events. They certainly got right there with flagpoles and memorial monuments there. That would be certainly a tip of the hat to the veterans in this city.
Awesome. So four would be more of a plaza.
Yeah, Veterans, Veterans Plaza.
Yep, the Veterans Plaza.
I love that.
You're going to get, when we have that and bring up, I'm sure this place will be packed with veterans.
Okay, perfect.
Anything else? Anything else on Pebble Pocket? I mean, anything else on Kelly Drive?
You got one over there.
There's parking size.
Parking size.
There's a great idea about community gatherings for specific events. So there's probably an upper level of how much drive-in traffic we have that are not going to be golf cart accessible. So maybe we need to look at what that parking on site.
We will definitely need to.
Yeah, you're looking at 50 spaces. Is that what I see?
Yeah.
There's also the, the parking that's just right up the road across from Huddleston Elementary.
Yeah.
And I feel like if you were having an event large enough there, that that's within.
That's true.
Easy walking of a very large parking lot. And there is a little bit of parking across the road at the spillway right there as well.
You, you may just need an officer, if it's a large event, to have an officer just guide traffic.
This is an excellent layout. I don't think we really, I think we've got some good ideas for you.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Let me address parking, because that's always an issue. There's a question in the survey that was, how to get to your parks, cars, trails, blah, 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 blah. Every community I've ever done, cars are like 90 percent. Your community, 40 percent.
How many?
I can't remember the numbers. It's in that report. But it's half of what every other community is.
Golf carts.
People use your golf cart, golf cart path to go to places in your community. For that reason, you're not going to need as much parking as most communities need.
Okay. And what I did here was you wanted to look at something closer to nine for more of a natural area play area?
Yes.
The only, the only issue I'll bring up with that is just parents don't, if, if mom is over here somewhere else on site, parents may not want the kids to be that far away from where the activities are happening.
True.
So, but we can definitely look at that. And we can maybe put it in the corner closer to the amphitheater side.
Okay, so noted, yeah.
Okay, this is the one you've been asking for. This is Pebble Pocket. So you'll see, we added some more connectivity to Pebble Pocket. The site, we've expanded parking. And the reason we expanded parking is this would potentially be another location for a splash pad. This is the site of the old pool. There's already restrooms on site. So utilizing the restrooms that are on site, expanding the parking footprint to allow for more people to come on site, allowing for golf carts to come on site, utilizing what's already there, adding some pavilions, some connectivity playgrounds up on the front side of Pebble Pocket. On the backside, again, trail connectivity throughout, resurfacing the basketball courts that are there. And number 10 is an expanded older playground. So back to your point about like an adventure area, it would be for older kids. A challenge, an obstacle course, ninja course, something like that that would be different than a traditional playground. The number three on the slide, sorry, I'm not using my button. The number three here would be a younger children's playground to complement the splash pad. Number 10 would be an older children's play area near the basketball courts. So this would kind of be structured more for older kids. And this up here would be for families, younger kids with a play structure.
How do you access that number seven? It just seems randomly put in there, that pavilion.
It's just under the trees.
Picnic canopy.
Yeah, so, so it's actually two. So you can see seven is just the dot. But there's a line going to two different pavilions under the tree line there.
Oh, I'm looking at the other number seven.
To the left.
You have two number sevens.
Oh, those are all just showing pavilion locations.
Yeah, so I was just saying, how do you access that? Because it just looks like it's in the.
It's, we're, we're just trying to leave as much tree, as many trees on site as possible. So it's under the trees.
That's a lot of path over there.
That pavilion is not like some big pavilion. That's a one picnic table with a shelter. That's something you pull up in the parking lot, you take your basket and you go over there.
Okay, so it's accessible from, it just looks like it's like.
With a shaded cover right under the trees.
Gotcha. Yeah, I like that, the park right by that splash pad. I think that makes sense. And I love the idea of a, the ninja. I saw that in the, in the draft. And I love the idea that it's just appealing to teens and adults.
Yeah, and there's some other things that we recommended, too. There's a whole different, everybody's got a cell phone, even the kids these days, and there's apps. And now there's play structures that connect to apps. So whether kids have friends with them and can play games on the structures, or they're alone, they can connect to their app and the app will give them games they can play on the structures. And that's a lap set. If you want to look at more information, it's lap set.
I saw that in your packet. Have you, y'all have implemented those in different places?
We have not done any here in Georgia. The closest one to here is in Rock Hill, South Carolina.
And they have good success? Like, I always worry about having technology integrated and how the reliability of that.
Yes, anything related to the app can be updated on the app. If it's a structure issue, that's covered by the manufacturer.
Yeah, that's interesting. I've never seen anything like that. So I'd be.
It's very cool. And for Peachtree City, I, I think it would fit well here.
Yeah, I don't like the app idea at all, period. We want kids to go out and play the old-fashioned way.
Yeah.
They get enough on their phones elsewhere.
I don't know about you. I don't even want an app for my garage door. My husband and I had a thing about it.
Yeah.
Does, but does the structure encourage movement?
Yes, oh, yes.
That's the thing, is like, are you, you're integrating the technology into something where they are moving.
Yes, yes, there's all kinds of games.
Like, out of their, so like, they could still be on their phones and then it encourages them to be active, right?
If they're, if they're a child that's more technology-minded and maybe not sports-minded or activity-minded, this gets them to be able to use their technology to be active.
Yeah.
And they can do that with friends. So friends that all have the app, they can play games against each other on the structure. Or if you're alone, you can play individual games using the apps, utilizing the structure. So it is really cool.
That's cool.
Anything else on Pebble Pocket? That brings us to Battery Way.
Battery Way. I won't mention names, but I heard this from someone on council that this, this site needed to be addressed. So we did create a concept to address some of the concerns at Battery Way. It does add a play area, a venture play area, kind of like what we were talking about. It does add a restroom building, a permanent structure, a play area. It expands parking and circulation and adds some additional golf cart parking as well.
How about parking parking?
Yes.
What number?
It's, it's that whole. And the 10 shows the.
Got it.
The two-way access in. And so it's kind of a circle loop in and out. And you see all the parking options. There's some parallel parking right along where number nine is shown. And then all the other parking is part of the circulation loop.
The issue I have, I like this idea. And I was the one, I'll admit, I was the one who, who barked the loudest on this. I can only see one thing that I might swap off with you or have you consider.
Okay.
Which is, I know that area number one is, there's lots of trees.
Yes.
There's no homes over there.
Right.
Nothing. Why can't we put the bathrooms over there? Keep them away from the houses, which are going to be in section 14 on this at the bottom. And over here beyond number 10, you're going to have houses over there. Keep the bathrooms maybe a little bit away from them. Just a, just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely look at that. We were trying to keep it closer to the light where we knew most of the use would be.
But you could put it, still put it over there. It's not that far a walk. What are you talking about? Twenty, twenty feet, maybe.
I would, I would agree.
Okay.
Where are you saying to put them? I'm not sure.
Over where number one is.
Number one, where we show just shaded seating. It's a seating area with benches and things like that.
You realize it's, it shows the inlet up here. And it goes over and there's a big pond here, if I remember correctly. Is that correct, everybody?
Yeah.
There's a big pond. And it does, there's no houses there. On the other side of the pond, where if you're down here by this one here, you're going to be, have houses all along the backside here. I'd rather get it as far away as I can.
Typically, you try to put your restrooms located near parking and along major circulation spaces, so.
So over here is, is a little too far away in number one area?
I mean, we can put it wherever y'all want to put it.
I think we just want to protect the neighbors.
Yeah, typically when we lay out a, a site, we try to put the, the restrooms near parking.
Yeah, we just want to, I agree with the mayor here. We want to protect the neighbors from these type of facilities.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
I'll take a quick comment, just real quick.
I really like what's being shown here. One suggestion is you consider golf cart charging in those spots where those electric outlets could double as a way to use high-performance pumps for inflating paddleboards.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Keith, real quick.
Real quick, very popular, especially among our senior residents, is towing golf, with their golf cart, their kayaks to launch here. I don't see the boat launch still preserved. And that is a very important point for the seniors.
That's right.
It's the only boat launch on the east side for people who don't have docks on the west side.
Good, good point.
Thank you.
Other thing is, is along the pond that Clint mentioned, you have over a quarter mile of natural surface trail potential that people have social trails in right now that can be adapted, walk the dog. That's what they're doing now. Plus, you have the opportunity to capture additional parking along the Battery Way street as parallel parking, if you were to expand the, the road width to add parallel parking.
By the neighbors?
On the street.
Yeah, no.
Across, across the street from the houses.
On the wooded, wooded side of this.
On the wooded side.
Yeah, which is beyond number three here in this area.
Like where the express street is.
Where the current no parking signs are.
Yeah.
Because the street's too narrow to do it safely now.
Thank you. Yeah, that put-in point needs to be respected. That's, that's important to us.
Yes.
We didn't touch any of that. We were just looking at.
The boat launch was there.
Yeah, we, we weren't touching any of that.
Added into the drawing so we don't get a lot of questions.
Okay, okay.
I want to offer up one thing. I hear what you're saying about the bathrooms. I disagree. I think the bathroom needs to be in, in a most accessible, visible place. We've had some problems with vandalism in the bathrooms. And I think, I think keeping it out close to the path, you're going to have more traffic, more eyes on. I think there are some significant reasons to leave it right where it is. I understand, but you know, if, you know, oh, let's put it farther away. Yeah, I understand that. But when somebody pulls in, they're really desperately needing to go. Now they got to park the car and hike across all those other areas to get to the bathroom.
Yeah, and keep, keep in mind, too, I mean, obviously, you're not looking at a ground view of what this would look like if you're standing in the parking lot or standing in, under those tree lines. Anytime we do, and I know you're going back to even when you brought us on to do this project, we are notorious for trying to preserve as many trees, natural areas. We let the land kind of speak to us as what it should be and try not to do masquerading and things like that. So we're trying to preserve as much tree cover in those parking areas and stuff as possible. So there will be a good bit of tree cover between the residential areas and where the parking is and even where those restrooms are located.
Okay. Any other comments about this one? All right, what's next?
I think that's it.
Okay, okay. All right. Comments from council?
I had a few, so I tried to keep my questions to the end because a lot of times you are answering them as, and a lot of them got answered. One of them, if we can circle back to cricket, with the, this is, I mean, this one just kind of came from left field, although I did just recently, my, my son plays baseball, so I saw them down there playing in one of the baseball fields. But for, for that information, where did that come from? That specifically, was that the survey? Where did that show up? And were they residents?
So some of the cricket comments came from stakeholder interviews. And some of the cricket comments, again, that last question on the survey was kind of open-ended. What else did we not cover? What else do you want us to know? And I think it was limited to like 150 characters or something. So they don't write us a book, obviously. But, but cricket appeared in that box.
From residents?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And it was like, it was pretty consistent. Was it, I guess it wasn't addressed in the survey base? So you said stakeholders and in the comment section of the survey?
Yes, so cricket was one of the options they could choose as an active activity. But when it's lumped in and grouped in with all the other responses, it may have not showed up in one of those top 10s. But people that actually took the time to write in that other section, cricket was one of the things that popped up the most.
Okay, great.
Laura, myself and, and the mayor and the chief of police have gone to several of the different cricket tournaments here in Peachtree City.
Are y'all saying you're playing, y'all are playing cricket?
We did.
Without me?
We were really good.
I, I did not get an invite to that.
I pitched.
I've never played.
It was fun.
But it was crowded. It was crowded.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I don't doubt it. I don't doubt it. No, I was just, I was just curious about it. I, I like the ideas. Oh, and I was interested in what you were saying as far as like, what's girls' sports and what's boys? And I know you said swim team tends, tends to be girls. But you know, in my mind, I'm thinking like recreation. What, you know, could you give me some more examples of that? And were the surveys weighted accordingly with, you know, your response being, I think you said 71 percent women and what they like and how is that, you know, represented?
I'll, I'll start with the female demographic. And this is just common. Every survey that we do, women respond more than men. Men do not like to complete surveys, apparently, because they are usually in the minority on the responses we get. The women dominate the, every time, in every community. Women are the ones that fill out the surveys the most. With regard to boys versus girls' sports, obviously, there are differences in what is offered for girls typically, what is offered for boys. Boys have other options, football and things, that maybe girls aren't interested in. But swim team, gymnastics, volleyball tends to be heavily girl-weighted, so.
Did we see volleyball in any of those concepts?
Sand volleyball, too.
Sand volleyball?
Yeah, volleyball was high on some of them.
No, no, my question is, in the drawings of the parks, where did we implement volleyball?
It may have not been in any of these concepts. And again, we just touched on a few of your sites. I mean, there's other sites that we didn't do concepts for because these were the concepts that were, I think, communicated to us by staff as really needing direction as part of the plan.
But for example, Blue Smoke, I think, has one sand volleyball court. I, I would guess that we could accommodate two somehow, somewhere to meet.
Yeah, and you could put them both at the same location, or you could split them up and have them at opposite locations.
But we didn't see that in here, correct?
No, there was no sand volleyball added in this concept. And the volleyball that ranked so high would be indoor volleyball. So making sure volleyball lines are on multi-use courts. So your basketball courts would be lined for volleyball or pickleball for indoor. But we would not recommend having three uses on the same court, just as too many lines. So either basketball and volleyball, or basketball and pickleball, but not basketball, volleyball and pickleball on the same court. It just becomes too busy. And I think probably pickleball would agree with that. It's just too busy with that many lines.
Which I think at Kedron right now, we have it marked for all three. And indoor, indoor volleyball is really popular there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think, again, it, it's already something that people are participating in. But if you wanted to add some more, I think it would be welcome.
All right, I had a couple more. In relation to pickleball and noise, is, is the distance that it's needing to be from residential, is, does that increase with the number of courts? Or is it a standard number that doesn't change?
It's a standard number, and you usually measure from the most, the furthest point.
Okay, so it doesn't matter how many we have? Okay, so it doesn't matter how many we have as long as, like, we keep that same.
It's still seventy decibels, no matter how you look at it.
Okay, that's, okay, perfect. That, that answers my question. And then you're saying that you need our feedback and so that we can make these changes. We do that before we adopt this. Can we continue to make changes after we adopt it, which I'm pretty sure we always can cause nothing is just set in stone. And do we have an adoption date?
So, okay, you go first and then.
So, kind of back to what I alluded to earlier, you were, guys were given a rough draft, just to kinda give you some context of what we would be talking about today. You could weigh in on the content. What we're gonna do after today, we've already basically redone that whole draft for you guys. Um, we're gonna provide that draft to you again, most likely maybe end of next week. So, you have a new draft to work from. So, you can take what you have, if you have notes on there, keep them, but it's gonna look different than what you have in front of you. So, that will come to you next week. From that document, which is gonna be closer to what we are thinking it's gonna look like as a final document. We would like you to make comments from there. You can send us back the comments you have now. We'll go ahead and try to incorporate those in by next week. But you will get a draft again that'll be closer to a final draft, once we, once we weigh everything in. You will have comment, I have the opportunity to comment on that next draft. We will put that all together, as Matt said. Once we get your final comments, then we will move forward with creating a final report, final draft, final cost estimates with a final list of recommendations.
And at that point, uh, in a council meeting, we will adopt. When we're ready, then we will adopt the recreation master plan.
And I'll work with staff on when the possibility of getting on an agenda in the future and we can communicate progress with getting everything done. We're, we're well underway with the cost estimates, but we don't ever like to do this till we hear from you. Um, and we know that we're on the right page and we're on the right track, so.
Madam Mayor, I'd make a suggestion that any of the comments that we have or changes we have or things that we want in and things that we want out is get them all over to the city manager so that you've got one person speaking to you instead of
Of course.
five of us.
That would be great.
You know, so as long as that's okay with you, Madam Mayor.
That's how, that's how we roll.
Okay.
That would be perfect. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
I have, I have something I'd like to kinda like throw out there. Some of it is just mistakes that I picked up on, um, and I don't know if, uh, this is necessarily the right place to go through all of this. So, let me just cut to the chase on it. On page forty-five, graph number eight, which is a pie chart. Um, it's how do you, or, how do you rate your satisfaction with the existing parks and recreation facilities? I, I don't, I get the feeling, you know, statistically, that it should not be displayed as a pie chart, that it would be better visibly as a bar graph.
Okay.
Um, and that being said, on several of your, your graphs that you do have, the subsequent ones on the next couple pages, the answers that were given range from, um, very, or, excuse me, don't use any of the facilities, very unsatisfied, unsatisfied, satisfied, very satisfied. And, but you don't have it in such a way that it goes from one end of the thing to another. You're displaying them, showing, oh, here's the greatest number of responses. But I'm looking at it, trying to go, well, where's the, you know, very unsatisfied, unsatisfied, satisfied, very satisfied, ranked, so that we can see. Is it like a standard, you know, bell graph, you know, you know, statistically, like, or is it like, everything's kinda here and then there's something that shoots up on the end?
Yeah.
It, it's very hard. Every one of these graphs that I'm looking at that you've got, you know, in the subsequent pages, it really, there's no rhyme or reason to what you're putting and it's, you have to spend so much time going, okay, how many are unsatisfied, how many are satisfied? And doing mental math, trying to figure out how many are on which side of the issue, if you say, okay, satisfied or not satisfied.
Yeah.
So, I, I think if you actually put them in the sequential order of unsatisfied to satisfied and rank it that way and then show us the bar graph, that would be better, easier to read and understand. And, um, backtracking to graph number.
And just to touch on that point, we, those graphs are generated from your data.
Right.
And that's coded by the company we contract with, Digital Media House, to do the project surveys. So, we can get with him about how that data is populated and, and as presented it can be. It can be bar graphs, it can be pie charts, it can be a lot of things. But I will say, along the lines of satisfaction, uh, very similarly, and, and it's in the, it's written in the document. But again, for what we saw across all genders, all, uh, filters, um, everybody was at about a ninety percent satisfaction rate, which kind of correlates to your satisfaction survey. I know y'all did last year as well.
Um, on, on graph number seven, can you please correct, uh, and I don't know if you can easily pull this up, but you've got age brackets on it and you've got nine hundred and twenty-seven four-year-olds responding. I'd like to know how you did that.
I think that's supposed to be the forty-six to sixty-four.
I know what it's supposed to be. I'm pointing out that it just, I'm looking at it going, four-year-olds, oh.
Gotcha.
Yeah, clearly that's a mistake that needs to be fixed.
And, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to give you guys the data, so you can actually access the data yourself. You can play around with filters, you can look at anything you wanna look at and kind of bring up any of those pie charts or graphs that you want to, looking at specifically the data you're looking for.
Right, okay.
Cause we can't print, oh my gosh, it would be massive if we did every filter for every question. It would be a lot of charts and graphs. So, this is everybody all-inclusive in the charts that you're seeing. What else do you have?
I, I guess I can pass for now. Some of the other things, the things that all suggestions just get corrected.
Yeah, and all of those, again, this was a very rough draft and I know we've talked to Justin about that. We wanted to give you something to kinda meet the deadline, um, but we realized, uh, we've got a lot of stuff to do. We had handed this over to a team member to work on this and, uh, assumptions were made and it didn't go well. So, Matt has come back out of retirement to, uh, to work to finish this up and, and clean it up. So, we're already well underway. We've been working on it for the last few days.
Frank, anything?
I just wanna say that everything that we've heard from the other council members, I generally agree with. I would only ask that, I, I was a little surprised that, uh, cricket was recorded so high, although I'm happy for that because I have a lot of cricket friends, or friends that play cricket, not cricket friends.
That's okay too.
It's okay.
They need friends.
But I, I think it's pretty good. I mean, I thought that everything that the council's been talking about, how many cricket, how many pickleball courts do we want or need? I think we need to understand that there's a cost for everything. And we can't obviously put everything that citizens want in one plan and then fund it. It's gonna take time to fund it. So, we need to get the, get the plan, prioritize what we can fund either through splash or through whatever we have funds for, and then start getting the things done the way we want it done for our citizens. But generally speaking, I think you hit everything that I've heard from the council. They wanna see from splash pads to pickleball courts, and now we even have cricket. Thank you.
Awesome. Last minute comments?
Yeah, I have just one more. I could probably go with five more, but one more that I'm gonna talk about right now. I noticed in the, in the first draft, you talked about, uh, performing centers and theaters. That's, we, we have a wonderful thread here and we do a lot of that. But we don't have a performing center here or a performing theater in our city. I think we're, uh, cultured enough and active enough citizenry in this city to start to look seriously at a performing center, and even if it's a small one, kinda like, um, the Legacy Theater up in Tyrone, um, which seats, I don't know, maybe what, five hundred people or something like that, with a performance stage. But it also gives the ability for our young people, particularly high school students, to go to an area where they can go and do performances, uh, and learn performances and, and maybe have, uh, some people that are in the city that would wanna do training in, um, in, uh, performance-type stuff in theaters. So, just a thought, I think we've got it covered a little bit, but it didn't seem expanded enough for my liking.
And it can be part of that multi-use, multi-generational facility we showed at Mead. That could be part of that, that you add a performance area in there. Kinda old-school, like we used to have in school where you have the basketball courts, you have the stage and everything there. So, that could be an option for theirs.
Thanks, Cindy.
All right, uh, that's all I have. I wanna say thank you and we're really excited to move this expediently to the next steps. Yeah, thanks very much. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break before we come back with the rest of the agenda.
Thank you to all of you who sat through that if you were here for something else.
Now the tough part comes. Not so tough on some of them, but some. I think we almost rattled through it.
All right, let's see who leaves. Justin, Justin's coming back.
Yeah, he's right there.
And item B, ratify all agreements executed by city manager in preparation for Hurricane Helene.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Council. In preparation for the storm at the time, Hurricane Helene, the governor did a state of emergency as well as our mayor had to do a state of emergency. And at this time, in order to be in preparation, excuse me, we ensure that we had contracts for Tetra Tech, which is a debris monitoring company, and Saris Environmental Services for the removal and hauling. These agreements are required in order to be reimbursed by FEMA. Luckily, we were not impacted as much as we thought. However, these agreements were executed prior, and they were just asking at this time for an actual vote to ratify them. And that is also part of the state of emergency resolution.
What do you need the motion to be?
Go ahead.
Ratify the attached agreements with Tetra Tech, Inc. for debris monitoring and Saris Environmental Services for removal and hauling services.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion other than thank you?
Yes, and good job.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Work session discussion item C, solid waste management ordinance amendment.
Yes, so in May, the mayor and council, excuse me, staff brought forward to the mayor and council our fee schedule. And at that time, we had discussions with Keep Peachtree City Beautiful in regards to the increase of all of the services, the increase of the amount of cardboard. Thank you. A 350% increase to the cardboard collection. And how that was also impacting the other services that were provided by Keep Peachtree City Beautiful. So at that time, Al discussed potentially increasing the $1 a month that they currently receive from all of the $1 quarter that they currently receive from all of the solid waste service companies in the city. That is the franchise fee that they pay to the city, which in turn, the city pays to Keep Peachtree City Beautiful. Increasing that $1 per quarter to $1 per month, that would allow for the additional, some additional staff. So currently, a lot of the staff in Keep Peachtree City Beautiful is not necessarily staff. It's volunteers required to do community service hours. But what they're looking for is to have additional supervisors monitoring and managing those individuals as well as increasing the number of hours at their recycling center. This ordinance also, there are some changes to the ordinance in regards to the part where it states who is actually managing the recycling center. The recycling center is managed by Keep Peachtree City Beautiful, so we're just adding that language in there. And also, it does state that county residents are allowed to use the recycling center and, well, the mulching yard. But if you know, they don't actually pay anything towards into that because the $1 per quarter is currently coming from the sanitation bills of Peachtree City residents. So we are removing that part of the ordinance as well.
So the county will not have access?
Correct, to the mulching center.
To the mulching center.
Correct. Currently, they do not have access to the recycling center either. So if there's any interest, we can add a specific line to the ordinance about that, but they don't have access to that now.
Well, currently, the recycling center, not the mulching yard, is available to everyone. No matter where you live. And so one thing Jasmine and I did talk about yesterday, because this is a discussion item, this is work session, is before this comes to you on the 17th, is adding an actual new section in here that addresses the recycling center because the recycling center's not even mentioned in this ordinance about limiting the recycling center to city residents only.
Is that what you would recommend? Is that what you think we need to do?
Is that what your recommendation is?
Ask Al Yogle right there.
Step up, Al.
While Al is stepping up, I wanted a clarification from you or something. You had said, oh, it's a dollar and then a dollar twenty-five, and then we're gonna put a dollar in the ordinance. Which number is it? Is it a dollar or a dollar twenty-five?
It's not a dollar twenty-five. I only said a dollar. What I said is currently, the ordinance states a dollar per quarter, not a dollar and a quarter. Per quarter, residents pay a dollar per quarter to the
My, I didn't catch that correctly.
That's okay. They pay a dollar per quarter on their sanitation bill to the solid waste haulers. The implementation of this would essentially be a dollar per month being collected by the solid waste.
As opposed to a dollar per quarter.
Correct. It's not a dollar and a quarter. A dollar per quarter, correct.
I heard it as a dollar and a quarter.
So it's going from four dollars a year to twelve dollars.
Right.
That is correct.
I got you.
Correct.
Okay, sorry, Al.
I'm here. Listen, after this last presentation and all these events and meetings and things, and we need help. We need to, we need the supervisors. We need to get control of the cardboard. And that frees us up to provide the services to the city we should be providing. It's gone, that 350%, it's crazy. We are crazy. We're going to the poorhouse and we can't do anything else, so we need your help. And this going from four dollars a year to twelve dollars a year will help with our additional supervisors, as Jasmine said. And that'll also make the supervisors available for other work that we have to do. Number one, we've been skinny on, and number two, our future looks like we're gonna have an awful lot more work to go.
Al, could you speak to, if we change this to the mulch center and the recycling center are for Peachtree City residents only, that suggests there's some kind of a check or enforcement?
That's, that's what's behind the adult help that we need. The recycling center now takes anybody. We don't do any check, unlike at Rockaway Road where we check everybody. So this gives us adults, a rotation of adults that'd be only working three days a week. So we have a couple of them, and we would check every resident there. We would be closed overnight. We would be closed on Wednesday, but we would be open the entire weekend. And we'd be closed, we'd be open on Sunday, as we are not now.
Okay.
I certainly can support that.
Yeah, any questions? So if we ask Justin to add in that section that you're talking about to restrict our recycling center as well as our mulch center to Peachtree City?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. Any other concerns? Ready, ready for next time.
Great. So we anticipate having this on the next agenda?
Beautiful.
And I do want to mention too, just in case if there's any questions, every one of the residential solid waste haulers do currently have a franchise agreement. There's no change required in the franchise agreement because it doesn't specifically state the dollar amount in there or how it's collected. It just states whatever the requirement is in the ordinance will automatically translate into the agreement.
So we update this, is it gonna have an effect on any of our citizens' collections at their houses and stuff?
Potentially, the haulers could trans, you know,
Pass it on, basically, yeah.
Pass the cost on to the residents, I could imagine. But we are going to have a marketing strategy to put the information out to the waste haulers, but as well as our residents as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Work session discussion item D, municipal court judicial service agreement.
Hi, Mayor, Council. We have had a month-to-month contract with our judge since December of 2022. And there was a new law passed, House Bill 456, which requires two-year term limits for, or not limits, but two-year term contracts for judges. And it became prudent to just renew our, to do a full-on renewal of our contract. So that's what is going to be on the agenda for the next meeting, is to renew his contract effective October 1st, because our fiscal year, that makes it easier for us to budget through September 30th of 2026. And it increases his fee from $150 an hour to $200 an hour more in line with our other attorney fees that we pay.
Fine by me. Questions, concerns?
Sounds fair to me.
All right, thank you. Jeepers. This is what you do in work sessions, huh? Work session discussion item E, State Route 54 at Huddleston Intersection Improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Dave Borkowski, City Engineer. As was brought up earlier in the meeting today from Mr. Hayes about the 54 Huddleston Intersection Project, we did take those concerns to GDOT and finally got an answer back from them that yes, the plans do need to be revised to address the issues with that right-hand turn coming out of Best Buy. That it does either need to be channelized with a yield sign or a specific, you know, arrow directing those people what to do. So we got that back from GDOT, and then we talked to the design engineer.
What was the decision on that from GDOT? Was there a decision as what they would want?
They said either or.
When you proposed it. Oh, either or?
Either one of those is acceptable. We reached out to the design firm, talked to them yesterday, and as Murphy's Law would have it, just putting the little island in there is gonna be a little harder than what initially thought. So they need to actually sit down, do the design, get the radiuses correct for the turn and whatnot. And that can have an effect on the, a significant effect on the plans. We could need to move a mast arm. We could need to get an easement, so. And then same thing with just doing a signal head on the other pole. We could have to look at the structural design of that pole. It may need to be upgraded. We'll have to go back through, and GDOT said we'll have to go back through the permitting process again anyway. So I think, and after talking with our attorney and everything and purchasing, I think the only fair thing to do is to just get the plans revised and cancel this bid and just go out to bid again with the revised plans. That way, there's no, you know, surprise change order or any of that stuff. So that's, that's what I'm gonna recommend that we do.
So we won't have this dollar amount to approve in our next contract?
Correct, correct. We just need to go out to bid again with the revised plans and then come back to you in the future.
All right, you don't need us for that, so you'll take that off. It will not be on the agenda for the October 17th.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Frank.
Would you please explain what exactly you're talking about doing?
Okay. The comment that was made was that the design did not meet MUTCD requirements for the folks coming out of Best Buy, turning right to head towards Noonan, that the way they had it designed was just with a yield sign, nothing else. And that's not correct. It either needs to be channelized in its own right-turn lane all by itself with like a concrete median on one side. Either you'd have that or you need to have a special five-section signal head up on the other mast arm, giving them an arrow, telling them when they can go. And those were, those were not on the, not on the plan. So we've gotta go back to the engineer, have that, either one of those designed. I'm thinking that the channelized turn lane will be the best option, but they're gonna look at that. It needs to be redesigned, and then we just need to go out to bid with the redesign again. That's all.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, I have a question for you on that particular turn. As you come out of that Best Buy and turn right, if it's channelized, is there going to be an acceleration lane? Because you could be having traffic coming through there, and you want to be able to get into the traffic. Will there be, if it's just a yield sign, is there going to be any kind of acceleration lane for that?
That'll be part of the design.
That is part of the design.
Yeah, that's why I was saying, you know, it may affect that signal pole that's right there in that corner.
Yep.
They've gotta work all that stuff out. They didn't want to tell me, the engineers didn't want to tell me yes or no, you know, over the phone. They need to draw it out.
Thank you.
Clint, from what we've, from what we've heard from transportation people, they don't do acceleration lanes so often, especially when it's coming out of like a yield sign like that. You have to sit there and wait until you have a clear enough field to pull out.
I understand.
They're probably not gonna do the acceleration lane. That's just not happening.
I've seen what really happens versus what should happen on some of these. So they're cutting out and cutting in front of people, and they don't wait for the clear. So just, it was just a thought about an acceleration lane.
Anything else, Council?
Dave, do you have any idea which one is gonna pan out to be cheaper? Which is the option for the little island thing with the, you know, the flow-through versus just the signaling being different?
My feeling is that if we can keep it in the existing pavement, you know, not have to widen anything, that's gonna be cheaper than doing rewiring and new signal head and all the electrical stuff that goes along with that. That's the, that's the thought, but we'll look at that.
But we're gonna get price estimates, or not price estimates, we're gonna get layouts for both ways, potentially?
Yes, we're gonna see which one's gonna be more effective or more cost-effective.
All right, Council, anything else on that one? All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Item number F, code revision to Lake Peachtree Access and Prohibited Activities Ordinance.
This ordinance, and we're gonna pull up a slide, but you have a redline draft in your packet. This is part of our lake, there's a chapter for Lake Peachtree or Park Access. And so we are, staff has been asked to look at updating it to reflect some change. Most of this was written in 1980s, so to reflect some of the changes that have occurred to our facilities around Lake Peachtree. And one of them is those rise of non-motorized paddle boards, kayaks, other type of watercraft. And so one of the recommendations is to allow the launch of these non-motorized watercraft from city-owned property anywhere, not just the boat launch locations, but anywhere along the green belts. As so long as none of those green belts are then damaged or altered as a result of this. The next proposed change is to, right now, the ordinance says that reckless behavior is not permitted. That's sometimes a little vague for our officers to enforce, and so we would like to add some language in there that specifically says that no jumping or otherwise propelled from fixed public facilities is permitted. This includes things like the new bridge over, we anticipate that to be an exciting launching space. The Battery Way Pier is already an exciting launching space that we have to regularly enforce people to not jump or monkey around on, and the spillway. So those are not specified in the ordinance, but this language will help us enforce or prohibit those activities from occurring.
Is there gonna be any posting on that, Robin?
Posting on?
Posting at places like our
We can, we certainly can.
Like Peachtree Bridge and things like that, no jumping allowed or something like that. I don't know, I don't, you know, we get signs all over the place.
Those deer crossing signs, how many deer actually follow those signs? I mean, it's, it's something that can be done, but it, having the ordinance at least allows our officers
We got enough signs, but at some point, we've gotta use common sense.
Right, right.
Unfortunately, common sense, as you know, is not so common.
Robin, this is not the first time this has come up.
This is the first time this proposed ordinance has come out. This is the first discussion. I'm sorry if I don't understand the question.
And I mean, you can see kids jumping off of the
Right.
Peachtree Parkway, bridge into the water.
All the time.
Every day.
And so we, you know, both our officers down at Code Enforcement Park and Path, but as well as your police officers, having something much more specific to give kids and their parents to specifically say no jumping helps them either, if it's a repeat offender, write a citation or at least give them the black and white. Having, right now, the language just says reckless behavior.
But we can put, I agree with the mayor and Clint, we don't want to have a lot of posted signs all over the lake. But we can put one at the bay, at the
At the entrance of the Battery Way Park, sure.
No jumping off of the bridge or something simple that the code enforcement could use as a
Where would you put that, Frank?
Right over on Peachtree Parkway, right where the bridge is. You may be there or maybe at the lake, at the beginning of the lake when you have the boat ramp.
That would be something that Justin and the sign team could work on, finding the right location if that's what you want.
Lake Kedron?
Yeah, we're talking Lake Kedron, Peachtree Parkway.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is all about Lake Peachtree only.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Kedron's not our lake.
Kedron is Fayette County's lake.
They still shouldn't be jumping off of there.
Agreed.
Yes, and I
When you said Parkway, I went for it.
And it may actually already be posted. It's been, it's been a while since I've been down there myself on those lakes. However, this is our lake, and so that's what this ordinance relates to.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for not being clear.
I think sometimes those signs just put ideas in people's heads.
You know?
Gee, I hadn't thought of that.
Having twin 10-year-olds, they're at that age.
But Robin, would this also, this is just me remembering because we talked about this weeks ago, would this also apply to the dock at Huddleston, like Huddleston Pond?
This is specifically, this chapter is Lake Peachtree Access.
It's just the Lake Peachtree, okay.
We have no jurisdiction on things like Lake Kedron, excuse me, like Lake Kedron or any of those or Macintosh. We can't do that. The county has to take care of that. They have to do what we're doing here for.
It's our bridge.
It is our bridge.
It's our bridge.
Oh, it's our bridge? So that, would that fall within this ordinance?
We're talking about different things. We're talking about a bridge over Peachtree Parkway, driving bridge over Lake Kedron, that's one thing. Another thing would be docks at Lake Kedron.
Right.
This issue today is Lake Peachtree, and it's under the Lake Peachtree ordinance. So we're talking Lake Peachtree only. So I have no problem with any of this. I was a little confused in the packet. It says, number three, no swimming is permitted where marked with signage currently. This is the perfect grammatical lesson. Quote, "No swimming," end quote, signs are posted at the Ralph N. Jones Memorial Boat Ramp and the spillway. Currently, quote, "No swimming" signs, as opposed to currently, no swimming signs are posted. Right, right? That's like a fourth grade grammar lesson. I got a little bit confused. Yes. So we just need to make sure that signs are posted as needed at the Ralph N. Jones Memorial Spillway. That will stop people from swimming there, but will still allow for, allow for put-in of kayaks, and that's fine.
This ordinance allows us to erect them This ordinance allows us to erect them anywhere as issues arise.
Oh, anywhere else, yeah.
Yeah, we, we talked about specific spots, but then we decided we need to just make the language more general, just where we put signs. Because we may need to put signs in other places in the future.
And for example, when we've had algae blooms.
Yeah.
And to allow us to post those signs that say no swimming, this ordinance gives us the enforcement leg we need to prevent those.
Um, but being as it is that swimming is allowed in this lake, how does a swimmer, when they're in the lake, know when they're in that area? And when they're in violation?
Most of our facilities, parks, actually all of our parks at the entrance have large signs that say what are permitted activities. So that's one way. Our spillway, where the riprap is, we do have signs there. I mean, and.
Well, and it would, to me too, it would be a little bit of education. Like if you're, if you start swimming at Battery Way and you decide you're going to swim all the way over to Ralph Jones, and there happens to be a code enforcement near there, you know, it could just say, hey, even though you can't see it, you can't swim, you know, around this boat ramp because people launch motorized boats here. You know, it would be a little education. Or when they get out, maybe they turn around and see.
But I mean, are they going to get a code violation?
That's not our normal practice. Our normal practice is to inform folks of an error and then, um, it's got, you know, notice a violation, let them fix it. And then if they become a repeat, then we would issue citations. But we rarely issue citations on the first, you know, especially if somebody's not harming.
So they can enter, because like, so say for instance, I have a sister who does triathlons and she goes out and swims and I will go and I will paddleboard beside her to make sure no boats are hitting her. So I'm like, she, and before, like we've launched at the boat dock here and at Battery Way and we'll go over to Drake Field and turn around. But is, is that one, is that one of the ones that there's a no swimming area? So the, the boat launch right there is fine to enter for swimming?
Yeah, Battery Way will still be swimming.
That's swimming, okay.
Drake Field will still be swimming, all childrens.
Okay, so that, that's still a good.
Picnic park.
Okay.
Yeah, specifically Ralph Jones because motorized boats go in and out there.
Okay.
And then specifically the spillway because.
It's dangerous.
Because of the spillway.
Well, and that one's marked, right? I mean, it has like buoys where you can't really get to the spillway, is that right? So, okay, well, like that one I understood, but with Ralph Jones, there isn't that type of marking out in the water for like swimmers to know, don't enter this area once they're actually in the water, maybe crossing the lake from the other side.
Correct.
Correct. So, okay.
I, I have a couple of questions. Okay, so, so people are going to be able to put in from Drake Field, anywhere along Drake Field?
Yes ma'am, as long as they don't create damage.
Okay. And Justin brought up the Huddleston, and I realize that's not covered with this. My question is, are there other bodies of water that we do need to look at here in Peachtree City for any reason?
The only one I would think of is, are the ponds. Always surprises me that folks are swimming in those, but, um, I mean, that's an option we can look at. As far as code enforcement, it's Lake Peachtree that has been the challenge for us because right now, they're not allowed to launch from anywhere except the, the launching, and they are. And so every time our code enforcement has to, to tell them, you know, people who live on Hip Pocket, literally walking across the street to, you know, right now that's a violation. And so this ordinance would allow that to, to happen. But I have not heard of any difficulties or violations occurring at the other ponds.
Okay, and, um, section fifty-four dash fifty-one, fines and penalties. It just basically categorizes that fines and penalties not to exceed the limits established for the municipal court of the city. Would there be any advantage to figuring out what the extent of that is and posting that on some of these signs? Like if you do this here, you could be fined up to, I mean, is that something that should be looked at?
Fine up to a certain amount.
Yeah. Up, I mean, not threatening a five hundred dollar automatic, but up to whatever.
It's up to a thousand.
Yes.
And we've recently had some pushback on that.
That might cause somebody to think whether or not taking that dip is all worth a thousand dollars or not. Or launching off the dock over by Battery Way. Or how is the phrase propelling themselves off the dock? So.
I mean, that's, that's a, an operational question. And we can always add more signs, add warnings and, and fine information. We've recently had some pushback on how that's being interpreted as a threat. But that's definitely something you guys can direct the city manager.
Which is interpreted as a threat? Putting up a sign punishable up to?
No, no, letting folks, when our officers have been letting folks know, when they get asked, well, what's the consequence of me doing this thing that is against the ordinance? The answer has been in the past, well, you can be fined up to a thousand dollars per incidence. And that has come back to us as being a threatened, threatened position. And so we have now informed our officers to let folks know, because it's true, that it is up to the judge to define what the fine would be.
Kind of gives you pause for whether or not they should get the official warning notice, you know, issued on, you know, like on a first offense so that we have good tracking of who's a repeat performer.
You're right, a notice of violation. Yes ma'am, that's what we do.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. All right.
Okay.
Any questions or concerns?
You're putting it on, you're putting it on code enforcement to decide what damage was done?
Well, if damage is done to property, that's actually a, a different ordinance when damage is caused. And they can be assess the repair cost of that damage, but it's usually, like in the, if it were a pier, it would be the public works department or engineering department who would calculate what the repair cost is.
I mean, most of the people are dragging their boat into, uh.
Oh, oh, so this is just to prohibit somebody from going in and taking a machete and going through and getting rid of all the undergrowth, so now they have an easier way to get into the lake. Or remove riprap, which is trying to prevent the erosion of the lake edge, those types of things.
Thank you.
Anything else Frank?
Great, that's it. Anything else?
Yeah, I have, uh, you know, from my understanding of this and discussing it with, with the city manager, is that we own the water and the land at Lake Peachtree. The county owns the water and the land in both McIntosh and in Kedron. But I just heard our esteemed lawyer say, what about the bridges? Now, we own the bridges that go over those, particularly, uh, Lake Kedron. And is that an appropriate place? Even though we don't own the water and we don't own the land, that's the county, can we legally say, don't jump from our bridge? Because I've seen it, I drive up there two or three times a day and I see kids even standing up there balancing on, they're getting ready to jump in. So, just a thought, I don't know if there's a legal issue with, with any of that.
It's our road.
It's our road and our bridge. Just a thought for you.
All right.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, next topic, thank you. Uh, work session discussion item G, zoning text amendments to create a short-term rental permit.
We're going to pull up the next PowerPoint. So this public hearing will be held on your upcoming meeting, the October seventeenth meeting. So this is not a public hearing, but this is to give you some information on where we have been and where we are right now with the proposed ordinance. So here's the, the timeline. As we all know, it's been several years in the making. We recently re-brought, brought this issue back up after it was denied by the council in the end of twenty twenty-three. But we've recently brought it back up and the planning commission held a public hearing, I don't have the date right in front of me, here we go, at their August twenty-sixth meeting. And they felt like they, um, were basically bringing back the ordinance that they had originally recommended at the end of twenty-three. They requested to make some modifications. And what I'm going to do now is go through where the ordinance is right now. Highlight some of those items. We are, if, if adopted, a short-term rental permit would be required. There is a cap of how many we would issue per year. It would be one percent. We recently got our tax assessor data back, and so I have updated this number to reflect the number of residential structures that are in the city right now. One percent of that would be a hundred and thirty-five maximum permits. And the ordinance is drafted so that those who can prove previous activity prior to the adoption of this ordinance would get first priority or, uh, what is the word? Priority, that's the word, I'm sorry. First priority in issuing of those permits. As we mentioned at the planning commission meeting, I estimate we probably only have maximum at this time, a hundred and twenty. I'd be surprised if it gets that. But we have adopt, we do have some tracking software and that's where I think we might end up. So I'm not concerned that those who have existing sites right now would somehow not get a permit if they applied correctly. So the next is that there's no grandfathering, as, as it's called. Everybody would have to get a permit. And it would apply to anybody who is either renting out a room or suite or the whole house. Doesn't have to be owner occupied, but you cannot use an RV or any type of detached structures, yurts, treehouses or anything like that. And that no subleasing is permitted. Local contact is required, who has to be twenty-one or older and must be available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and be on location if requested by the city within one hour. As you know, something called a managing agent is a state licensed position. This local contact person could be a managing agent, but doesn't have to be. And, um, oh, I have this twice. I see that now, I'm sorry. Scratch that last bullet point because we're going to talk about that at the next, on the next slide. Because that is one of the things that the planning commission has changed. So minimum standards, obviously no special events or parties are permitted. All parking related to the short-term rental must be on, must be off-street and on paved surfaces. Garbage must be screened from view and only a bedroom can be used for sleeping. Bedroom is, is defined by the international building code and there's a maximum of three people per bedroom. They also have to post the city's noise ordinance requirements and parking requirements so that everybody who is on the facility knows the right way to behave. And post the phone number of their local contact person. So here's some of the things that have changed. The planning commission, the way the ordinance was presented to them, it required a criminal background check, including fingerprints. The planning commission recommended removing the fingerprint requirement. And what that means is that it would be a background check for activities in Georgia only, would not be a federal or a national background check.
Quick question on that, Robin. Is this the same kind of background check that we do for owners of liquor establishments, bars, massage parlors and the like in our city? Is it anything more onerous than that?
It's this.
So is it the same basic background check?
No, actually, um, the background check for alcohol licenses is nationwide. The massage, uh, regulatory fee certificate is Georgia only, so it is a little different.
Okay, so it's the same as what we do for a lot of businesses here? So it's not anything onerous where they got to go get fingerprinted and all that kind of stuff? It's just Georgia, it's just Georgia background check only? Do I understand that correctly?
In order to do a national background check, you must have fingerprints.
Okay, so if we remove that and as it says, background check is Georgia only, that would eliminate that requirement of fingerprinting? Did I hear that correct?
That is the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. Thank you for.
On the topic. Let's say that did get eliminated per the planning commission, what does that leave that is still then required?
Then they just have to sign a consent form for a background check and we run it through our Georgia database.
It's a Georgia background check, like we do for businesses.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Like we do for the massage parlor.
Well, the massage actually does receive fingerprinting, so it is a little different, but the massage is only Georgia.
Okay, let's eliminate a discussion about massage. Are there other requirements? When we have other requirements for a background check in Georgia for, who, businesses or anybody else, alcohol? Is this the same? We would leave it the same as that?
Alcohol fingerprinting.
Oh, okay, never mind that.
Alcohol fingerprinting? Including restaurant alcohol?
Yes, correct.
So they're all fingerprinted like for anything to do with alcohol?
So my, my question is, if that gets eliminated, that national fingerprinting thing gets eliminated as the planning commission recommended, what does that leave that we are requiring in our STR ordinance?
It's a consent for a background check, it's just a, a form.
Just a criminal background check. Okay, thank you.
So it's basically cut back significantly from the last go-around where we had the FBI involved in all of that? That's all goes away?
That's what they're, that's what they're recommending.
Okay.
If all that language that we went, ran through the GBI to get the ability to run fingerprints, they're asking to remove that language.
Okay, thank you, I got, I got a better understanding, thank you.
Can, can I toss in one thing here? Since we're having this big discussion about it in the middle of your presentation, sorry. But Ted, should we get your way in on this one? Because if we take that out and somebody's rents a room in their house, but they do have, you know, something going on and there's no fingerprinting or whatever, um, is that going to leave us in a liable kind of a position with? Okay.
No, um, anymore than they fingerprint, I don't want to say these things are hotels, but they function on a much smaller scale in that way. And nobody, I mean, there's not the requirement for hotel operators to go through a federal database background check. So I have no concern the way it's, what the planning commission recommended gives me no heartburn.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Robin, they.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
They eliminated the fingerprint only?
Yes, sir.
They still have a background check?
Yes, sir.
But that's no different than any other that we do, any other business that we do?
Well, no.
Yes, it's different because the alcohol gets fingerprinted, it's a nationwide, they physically get fingerprinted.
Right, got that.
The massage gets fingerprinted, but it's Georgia only, but that's how we do the background checks. There's no other business that I'm aware of that requires any background check in the city. That's what I mean.
Oh, there you go.
I'm sorry for the clarifications.
There aren't any others.
Thank you.
Thanks, we can keep going, sorry about that.
Other things that they would have to submit with their application is a past fire marshal and code enforcement inspection form, the copy of the guest occupancy agreement, which coincidentally is actually required by Georgia law. Apply, they, um, they can apply any time of the year and it would be good for three hundred and sixty-five days. It's a four hundred dollar annual fee, three hundred dollar renewal fee. Now, if we have removed the fingerprinting, I mean, that's the difference between the four hundred and three hundred was the background check, the, the extensive, you know, the more expensive, let's say, background check. If we're going to do those every time, then we could keep the fee, it's about twenty-five dollars difference, it could be three seventy-five instead of four hundred. Or we could just keep it the way it's proposed, just something to think about. Just to keep in mind that that fingerprinting was part of the calculation of that fee. And then the other recommendation that the planning commission had is, you all had said, let's do an online database of the, the STR permits that have been issued. And they said, actually, let's go back to providing a written notification to all properties within two hundred feet. So that's one of the things that they made a suggestion about. I don't know, I mean, this is, I guess the things in red, it would be helpful when it comes before you right now. I've got notes in the red line draft and if you can tell me, yay, go with the planning commission, or nay, don't go with. And if you can tell me, yay, go with the planning commission, or nay, don't go with the planning commission, that helps me get you a correct red line for the October seventeenth packet.
Okay, you wanna start? Mr. Holland, go ahead.
Nope, I'll be the first one to start. As far as the background check, we've beat that one to death, you know, eliminate the fingerprinting, okay? As far as the.
Let's stop right there. Let's stop, yeah.
One item at a time.
Let's stop right there.
We should start in the beginning.
So I appreciate very much the diligence that our planning commission put into this. And they are recommending, and this is on page in our council packet, three hundred and nine. Don't go there. They are recommending removal of the fingerprinting requirement. Are you saying you support that removal?
No, no, yes, I'm supporting the planning commission to remove the fingerprinting requirement.
All right, anybody else?
I support that. The planning commission says I support it.
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Brown?
I'm okay with taking that out, based on Ted's okey-dokey.
Point of reminder, I'm accusing myself on this, so I won't be weighing in.
All right, and I agree with that as well, that the planning commission recommends removal of the fingerprinting requirement. I'd like to see that removed accordingly. Okay, next item? Mr. Holland, did you have a next?
I didn't really have anything about passing the fire marshal or the, the copy of the guest occupancy agreement, but I got down to the cost of the permitting. Is there any way that we can skinny up the cost of the annual fee and the renewal fee along the way? Because I know there's a certain cost that we have to incur to do some of this stuff. And you had mentioned, oh, we can cut it twenty-five dollars here, or fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars, or whatever it is. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, if you want to have inspections annually, then we can't cut it any lower than three hundred dollars.
Okay, that's what our cost is to do.
That's less than our cost.
Is it true that Atlanta's charging one fifty and one fifty?
I, you know, I don't know what their current fees are. I know what they were a couple of months ago, they were only seventy-five dollars a couple of months ago.
So that means they're not doing re-inspections?
I don't know if they're doing any inspections and just, I don't, I couldn't tell you that.
We also have a monitoring fee that we have a contract for, that's some of the cost.
And with the cap, it was easy for us to figure out what the per-permit cost of that is.
So right off the bat, we can now make it three hundred, three hundred?
Yes, well, if we're gonna, so remember the three hundred annual didn't include the background check. It was only done on the first time.
Yes.
And so if you want to try to cover the cost of that background check, then the lowest we could do is three seventy-five for the first time, and then three hundred subsequently, annually.
Because we only do the background check once.
Check on that first time.
And the first time, would you do, would you mail out the notices every year or just the first time as well? Does that include the mailing out to the?
It does include the mailing out. It was, we had, we had calculated the average number of mailings and using the old post office, so that's actually increased recently. But that would happen the first time, as well as any time that they change the local contact information.
And we still have to run the, we still have to run the Georgia background with the first time?
That's the way the ordinance is written, yes, sir.
Well, it's done on the first one, and that's under the first four hundred dollar fee that we do the first time. Do we need to run, and this is a question for the police here and maybe the lawyer, do we have to run background checks every year, which increases the cost of the three hundred annual renewal fee? Do we need to run it every year? And that's a question that I don't know the answer, maybe law enforcement is illegal.
No, there's no reason to run a background check at all, except that if you do it annually, if somebody did something between getting the permit and renewing it, you would catch it if you did it annually.
I could eliminate that, I could eliminate that.
I could, I could too, I could say, no, cut that back.
So one time only?
One time only. You know, maybe, we should be careful.
Every other year.
You know, every, so, so many years we can do it. I don't know what, how complicated this can get.
As far as our software goes, we can do annual renewals very easily. We can track it year to year because the permit number is, starts with a year number. If I have to start analyzing each permit on whether or not they did the background check two years ago or five years ago, that is so easy for us to lose that information. There's not an easy, there's not a way, we'd have to manually go through every file to do that, so.
So if you do it yourself, is there any reason why we can't just then take the annual renewal fee and knock it back to two hundred dollars, something like that? I don't know what the rest of the people here think.
So the annual renewal is three hundred because you still have those two inspections, which are a hundred dollars, well, actually a hundred and twenty-five dollars now, that we've updated our fee schedule per hour. So that's, what is that? That's a hun, that's a really great amount, two hundred and fifty. And then there's the annual maintenance cost of the, of the tracking software, which at three hundred, I mean, we, we're not covering it.
So bare bones is three hundred seventy-five first time and three hundred to follow?
Yes, ma'am, we, we were never making money on any of these fees, we can't make money.
I understand, I understand. All right, so, so we're at three seventy-five and three hundred?
I, I don't think we have a choice. I think, obviously, we have to have the permit fee upfront. And if we're gonna do the re-inspections, and we don't want anybody to fall through the cracks and with making modifications inside of a house. And I hope nobody out here is sitting here thinking, I'm accusing anybody of doing anything, I'm not. I'm just saying, we have to protect against some of the worst-case scenarios. So I think re-inspections are kind of a necessary evil.
Okay, okay.
I've got one more comment and see if there's any, any help here from the council. I would just make it easy, make it three hundred dollars. Whether you're starting up or it's an annual renewal, just one fee every year, starting from the first, first year. And I know there's a little more cost than the first year, but it's done, it's over with. We absorb that and move on to the next, you know, how many of these are we gonna get? A hundred of them? It's not like it's a huge dollar expenditure on our part. To make it easy, to make it easy for the citizens that are gonna be getting these, every year, it's a three hundred dollar fee, done. Just a thought, everybody.
Suzanne?
No, yeah, I think you're, you're looking at expecting other taxpayers to fork over ten thousand dollars toward these people getting their permits. I don't necessarily think that that's the advisable way to go.
Frank, any thoughts on that?
Where'd you get ten thousand dollars?
Well, if you're gonna reduce it by seventy-five dollars, you know, each year, or the upfront thing is seventy-five dollars off, that's gonna be, you know, times a hundred and twenty.
Seventy-five hundred.
I'm just in favor of trying to reduce the cost for the people that have it now. I don't mind somebody coming in new, one of these new individuals that want to get a permit. They ought to pay the full, full share.
It's not gonna be that many new people.
How do we know?
In the future.
Not that many, even then, and that's something else I want to talk about. I want to cap it at a hundred and twenty, period, end of discussion.
Well, we'll get to that.
We'll go back into that in a bit.
So I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to reduce the cost for the people that are currently having a permit, haven't had any problems in the years they've had it.
They have no permit, that's the problem, there is no permits. They've had an expiration.
We, this is not intended to be punitive. This is part of our economic situation in the city. And, and having the ability to attract, you know, grandparents who want to come visit or people who are looking for a house to buy, or vacationers and other guests, you know, is, it's important in Peachtree City, and I don't want to penalize our current STR operators. But what I'm hearing is that the best we can do to cover costs is three hundred seventy-five first time and three hundred annual renewal.
No further cuts in any of the second time around, Robin, to reduce the three hundred?
She already said it's because of inspections.
I know, I'm just, I'm asking her to rethink, is there any of that we can cut out, or is it just, that's what it is? Three hundred.
That's what it is.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
All right, I think we're at three seventy-five and three hundred.
Okay.
All right, and Clint, you want to take that last?
Yeah, I'll take the last one here. I happen, I happen to have faith, maybe I'm being a little bit of a Pollyanna, but I have faith in our citizens. And to have those citizens have the city impose, we're gonna go notify two hundred feet, and we're gonna notify all those people that you've got a, a short-term rental. I would hope that the goodness of our citizens will walk to their next-door neighbor, talk to them and say, look, I'm gonna be renting this house out in a short-term rental, but I need you to know, and I want you to hear it directly from me, as opposed to, oh, my gosh, I got it from the city. Hey, next-door neighbor, why didn't you tell me about this? I, I, I find that a little punitive on, on the renters, the short-term rental owners. To, for us as big brother, we're gonna come in and we're gonna tell everybody, you've got a short-term rental there. I'd like to leave it in the hands of the individual short-term owners who are our citizens. The majority of them will be our citizens. Let them go and tell their neighbors. I think it's just good neighborliness that they should do this. That's my opinion on that.
So are you saying, that last bullet, replace with written notification to all property owners within two, are you saying get rid of that?
That's exactly right.
I would support that.
I would not, and here's why. Every time we put somebody in a position where they have to go to their neighbors, and, and some neighbors are good, some you know, some are fine, whatever, I don't think you should be putting the people with an expectation that they're gonna go and inform all their neighbors. The other part of it is, this is a zoning change, and let's not forget that. Every house that gets permitted as a short-term rental is being technically rezoned as a commercial property. So sending out, and that's the discussion that happened with regard to the planning commission. This is the same notification distance that you would be sending things out if you were doing a zoning change. Notification to people within two hundred feet. If we're getting rid of the database and some of the other stuff that's, that's going along, I think that the, the letter that goes out initially upfront, it's gonna go out one time. And in order to get that first permit issued, and I think that that's the way to do it. I don't want to see people having some obligation and then they don't feel comfortable going to their neighbors and saying, I'm gonna do this.
We can't enforce that anyway.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not realistic, it's not controllable, it's not enforceable. I think just sending these letters out, we see when we send them out for a zoning change of a particular property, some of the neighbors are gonna show up and speak and some of them are not. You know, but they're gonna at least be informed that this is happening with a permit for one property in their neighborhood within two hundred feet of their house. I think they have the right to know.
I would still remove it.
I think there might be a compromise, if I may. Councilman Distadio, did you want to opine on this before I start again?
No, let me hear what you have to say.
Maybe we can.
I know, I'm leaning towards doing what the planning commission wants.
Right, I, I hear you.
So tell me something different.
Well, I'm gonna tell you a little something different, and I don't know if this'll fly or not, but, you know, you've got someone that's having short-term rental. What about, instead of two hundred feet, you contact the neighbors to the left of you, and the right of you, and in front of you across the street, and maybe the one behind you? So there's four notifications that go out. And I'm just making this up on the fly here, it just has an idea to talk about. So you've got left, right, across the street, and behind you. Those are the most affected people. And it limits it from two hundred feet down to four houses. It's a compromise, everybody, it's not, you know, I'm not.
Is that even workable?
I don't know, that's something.
If we write the ordinance so it says all properties adjacent, then that will catch up.
Properties adjacent is how you do it?
Basically, anybody who shares a property line with them, that way those on cul-de-sacs or whatever, we could do that.
I just think that requiring a letter like that is a, if I'm an owner in Peachtree City, most of our STR operators have probably been at this for a long time. To have to go out and send a letter to your neighbors now, it's not like you're a sexual predator on the list. I just think it is a violation of private property rights to have to send a letter to neighbors.
Wait a second, every neighbor that lives next to them has the right to enjoy their residential property and not have a commercial property next door to them. So it works both ways in that regard. So, you know, I mean, I understand that there's a lot of personal opinions coming to the forefront with all of this, but we have an obligation to protect the rest of the citizens to a certain extent and let them know what's happening in their neighborhood. This is a zoning change. And, you know, I understand lots of people are gonna have their opinions on this, but this is the same distance that we would notify people if somebody was applying for a variance or a zoning change, et cetera. We're not singling them out in any different way.
Thoughts on that?
Yep.
You wanna?
I was just trying to compromise, and I'm sorry, I didn't run it by all of you before.
That's what, no, that's what we're here to do, that's what we're here for discussion.
Compromise we could come up with that would be maybe, now you're talking about fifty feet instead of two hundred feet.
I think what the planning commission did is the compromise.
But that was not a unanimous vote, I do know that. That was not a unanimous vote of two hundred.
Point, we'll take it.
It doesn't have to be unanimous, it obviously was the majority vote of the planning commission.
Right, it was a majority vote, I'll agree to that.
That's right. Any last thoughts on that, Frank?
No, I just have to tell you that the planning commission does an awful good job.
Indeed they do.
And we just redid it, we just added new people, put in, and they put a lot of time and thought into this. And I think that we should not just step over them, the way I was stepped over by other council members on what I wanted done. And I think we need to listen to the planning commission.
All right, that's the, that's, that's what they're recommending.
I think that's, that's what they're recommending, I've listened to them in the past. This is the only, the only time I have maybe modified theirs.
I will defer to Mr. Distadio and Ms. Brown and the planning commission on that. And finally, we have that map or database.
Well, that, that was the planning commission recommendation, is to remove that and add, re-add the written notification instead.
I would, I would support that then.
And I'm okay with that.
Are you going to another slide, or can you go backwards?
We could go backwards if you want.
Did you have something more to present though, before we go back?
Remember this?
Yes, I do, I remember that, I just wanted to go back a couple of slides, that's all.
The last part was the fines that are listed. I think that was the end of it, yeah. Unless you wanted to revisit those. That, that was a recommendation from the planning commission the last time it came forward. And you didn't change it.
So, so to recap, in all instances, we've supported what the planning commission recommended?
Yep, so far.
Yes.
I agree. Let me just go back to, 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 go back one more slide.
Ignore that last.
Go back one more slide. Here we go. On item number two, a maximum one percent of residential structures in the city. Currently, you got thirteen thousand five hundred homes, therefore it's a hundred and thirty-five, one percent. What I would like to propose here, and I don't know if this was ever brought up at the planning commission, but I would like to propose that that is the cap. I don't care how many more houses come along, that is the cap. And it's no further beyond that. And I would like that, on that particular topic, to be discussed here among everybody, to make it a cap of one hundred and thirty-five, since that's the number. That is the correct number right now?
According to the one, the tax digest we got just last week.
Yeah, it was one twenty, because you had emailed that. But we looked at the tax digest yesterday that we just got, and with the newer homes we have now, the number's gone to one thirty-five.
Well, perfect example of what I'm saying, let's cap it at a hundred and thirty-five if that's the, the number right at this point. That would be my suggestion, I'd love to hear my colleagues on this.
Personally, I think that's fine. I don't think we need to keep letting it grow, as long as we've got the number right.
Yep, it appears so.
Ms. Brown?
I completely agree with establishing a flat cap and not have it be where, oh, we can add one more, oh, we can add one more. I think that that becomes out of control. I've spent quite a bit of time in the last, let's say, several days, reading in quite a few articles that have come out in the last couple of years. from various municipalities who established a short-term rental policy, who didn't put a cap in and have been completely overrun to the point where, and not just Savannah, which we've talked about, but where they've been completely overrun, and it's all across the country, overrun by all of the investors coming in, setting up thousands of short-term rental properties to the point where it really impacts and excludes young families from being able to find a house that they can actually afford because they can't compete with the investors who come in and have cash deals, can pay way more than the house is worth, and they're just taking away all of the owner-occupied options for so many people. And that would not only include new families, young families, people trying to move into the area, our own workers who get, are getting pushed out of the whole thing, as well as senior citizens if they're, if they are looking to downsize but don't wanna rent and wanna go into another house, just a smaller house that they can control, one with a master bedroom on the first floor. So, I, I think that keeping some of the investor pressure off, and we can't ban it, but we can try to control the number, and that will essentially control it.
So, today's cap of one, today's maximum one percent is one thirty-five, and we'll consider that to be a flat cap.
I can agree to that.
I can agree to that.
I agree to that.
I think that's it.
No, I have one other question.
Yep, I got some too.
I'm sorry, we still have never addressed how we're gonna protect the communities or the neighborhoods that do not have HOAs, and.
This is it, this is it.
Well, yes and no. Should, should we look at maximizing how many can go into any one individual neighborhood?
I think we determined that it's too hard to identify sometimes a certain neighborhood or lay out geographic, you know, random geographical boundaries and say only, in this area you can only have seventeen, but in this area you can have twenty-one. I think we've already beat that horse to death in terms of, not everyone is in a subdivision, I'm not.
No, but you could actually, in your, in your case, look at all of the properties between the lake and hip pocket, or, and then from hip pocket to seventy-four. I mean, there are ways to actually break an area up into set numbers, because, quite honestly, I, I view some of the lakefront properties as being some of the ones that some of the big real estate investment trusts would be looking at to go after because they could charge a huge amount of money for some of those as a short-term rental.
I, I would, I would put forward that we have established a flat cap in the city. HOAs are allowed to prohibit short-term rentals, that's up to them. And beyond that, I cannot imagine that we're gonna start making imaginary boundaries and, and limit, break down that one hundred and thirty-five limit throughout, I can't even, I can't even imagine that.
I don't know, I live in Interlochen, and there is not an HOA, and there's no easy way to put a boundary on what Interlochen would look like in terms of the golf course on one side, Lake Kedron on the other side. I mean, there's just no way I think you could say you can only have seventy-five of that one thirty-five in our area.
Well, I do a lot of door knocking, and I can tell you, I can break down a lot of neighborhoods into actual neighborhoods.
I bet you could.
It's real, it's actually pretty easy, especially if there's one way in and one way out. And that's.
One way in and one way out.
Right, so, so I mean, it's, you know, it can be done. Now, correct me, I thought the GIST data that we have access to is able to break that down into specific neighborhoods with some of those.
We do have, we have the neighborhoods broken down.
We could even do it in phases within a neighborhood, but, but not everywhere, I mean.
The issue for me logistically though is, is, I mean, at that point, you basically have one STR per neighborhood, based on how many we have. If we cap it hard at one thirty-five.
It gets back to, we can't, our software can't, we'd have to manually establish, it's, it's very difficult at a staff level to manually establish how many, and then track how many have been issued because our software can't do that for us.
We need a big board map with pushpins.
Thoughts, Mr. Holland, thoughts?
This is a difficult one for me because I can see this potentially changing the character of a neighborhood. For instance, if a neighborhood of, I'm gonna just throw out numbers here, they're just making this up, fifty homes, and it, there has no, there is no HOA, and they're within the hundred and thirty-five cap, and an investor of some type comes in and buys ten homes in there. You now got a twenty percent of the population in that, or, in that, homes in that area are gonna change the character of that neighborhood. And that's, that's the, that's the dark side of this kind of thing of, of not setting something up for protecting the neighborhood characters of the different part of the city. And I think without that kind of, at least a look at, and I'm, I don't hear a lot of support for this, and I'm not saying I'm against it or supporting it, I just think there's a lot more to be discussed here before we come to a conclusion on this.
That's part of your ability, we could do is track it over the first year, come back and let you know. Here's, you know, present a map and identify if there are areas, and then if you say this is an issue and we need to address it, then we can revise the ordinance.
And I, because speaking of Savannah, I was, I was there, I worked in Savannah when they adopted the STR ordinance there, and it's changed since I've been there, and they, what you're talking about is something they implemented after I left of, they only allow STRs in certain, they actually banned it throughout the city, but only in two, two zoning districts. And they capped the two zoning districts at twenty percent, I believe, of those two zoning districts, and they banned it throughout the rest of the city, which is different from when I was there, but kinda like what you said of only in this area. But I think that would be harder to do somewhere like here because Savannah has such clear, you know, they have the squares, they said the historic district is where you can do it.
Yeah, but it, I, I just, one of the primary things that has come back to me from so many people that I talked to about this is, I don't have an HOA, how am I gonna be protected? And I mean, I, I hear that from all, all neighborhoods, including in your neighborhood. You know, I mean, I don't have an HOA, I, you know, I'd love to cap it at, I don't know, two percent within any neighborhood or whatever, or no, a maximum of, you know, and it has to be a percentage, 'cause a neighborhood could be, fifty houses or a neighborhood could be a hundred houses. So, it would have to be a percentage as opposed to a flat number.
At this point, two of us do not support moving forward with that kind of a segmented limit, so if anything, we can take into account what Robin has suggested as far as moving forward.
I think that's a good suggestion, Robin, that we look at this thing before we come to a conclusion.
We'll see what we learn in the coming year after we get this ordinance passed.
It's, it's just so hard to change these things, and I'd like to be able to do this.
It's hard to develop them too, but I, I've got a couple of more things that, I'm sorry. Councilman Destadio, did you have something else that you wanted to add? A couple of more things, I like this area right here to focus on. I know that we're going to be giving somewhat of a priority to all of our existing short-term rental people to get in line first, get their permit first, and I appreciate that. So, the grandfathering, I understand, is maybe a little bit nebulous right here, but let's not forget that we gotta take care of our citizens.
It's not, it's not nebulous, everyone's gotta go get a permit.
Yeah, I know that, I got that, but, you know, sometimes grandfathering has different meanings. In my case, I want our citizens to be in line first.
Luckily for us, our ordinance defines grandfathering.
Okay, it does, great. The last question I have is, I'd like any kind of comments from our, our lawyer, Ted, to give us, have we missed anything that's gonna get us into trouble before I bring up my last point?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, this is an evolving area. There's cases on this issue that come up, you know, a couple a quarter in, throughout the fifty states. So, as I sit here today, no.
Okay, my last point is, is there anything, did I miss this in the ordinance of making sure that the homeowners who are renting out their facility have appropriate insurance to cover any kind of damages or whatever the case, or cover particularly any liability that we would have as a city? And I don't know how far you could stretch that kind of insurance, but I wanna make sure we're not gonna get ourselves into trouble as a city by not having an appropriate amount of insurance at the homeowner's end.
I mean, a property owner has a vested interest.
Yeah, they have it, of course, for their own liability and damage and stuff.
We don't set liability requirements for homeowners.
We do.
We do not.
We do not, should we be doing it in this case? Okay.
Do we, do we set that for any, any commercial property?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Tree removal, uh, tree removal companies, we require that they have a million dollar and that they have workers' compensation.
But not for the actual application, right, it's for a permit.
They have to, they have to show that when they get a permit.
Yes, sir, yeah, yeah, not.
Not for just owning a property.
Right.
So, we're saying.
We don't require general contractors who come in for a building permit to show insurance requirements.
No, the only thing they're required is to have a state license.
We don't require alcohol license holders to show proof of liability coverage for their licenses.
Good, thank you, you answered the question very well.
All right, any more questions?
That's it.
All right, do you have what you need, Justin?
I do.
I think we covered it. Two years in the making, I think we're gonna find an ordinance we can support.
We're gonna have a public hearing on this at the end?
October seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, council staff, council staff topics, anything?
No, no, this meeting's long enough, let's go.
Um, I have.
I have two announcements.
I have, one is when we leave here, we can go to the food trucks until two o'clock. It's food truck Thursday today, first Thursday of the month, and again in November before we close the season. I want to ask, can you turn the lights on, please? I wanna ask city council, I met with the executive director of Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity recently, and they have resources to provide home improvements and home property upgrades to qualified entities, including veterans, widows of veterans, and other groups in Peachtree City, and they are interested in providing some of those resources to those who need it in Peachtree City. You think we could bring her in and do a ten-minute presentation in one of our council meetings?
I think that's a great idea.
I do too, particularly, we've got Camp Creek that really needs a look at.
I got really excited about this, and she's very, very experienced and knowledgeable, and I'll invite Cynthia Jenkins in then, in one of our coming meetings. Thank you, that's all I have, Justin?
I just wanted, because it's coming up, uh, next week, yeah, next week, is the FOIFAR exhibit unveiling at the library.
I think it's Monday, isn't it, one o'clock on Monday?
Yeah, Monday, October seventh, one P M., and then the next day, October eighth, all day at the library is the fiftieth anniversary celebration for the library.
Starting with a coffee bar, free coffee bar at nine A M.
Yeah, we're doing all kinds of stuff, we're doing giveaways.
And then at, at four o'clock in the afternoon is, I think it's a local author's expo, and all day the first five hundred visitors get some kind of a giveaway, a logoed giveaway. Fiftieth, fiftieth anniversary of our library. Anybody else?
Yes, I have, I have a couple of things. I wanna at least bring up the whole issue of deer that I know we've talked about once or twice, and I know I'd like to see that eventually make the, make the list of things that we talk about at city council. And that's basically all, I just wanna make sure that, I see them all the time, and I'm sure everybody in this room sees them all the time. We need to do a little bit more in-depth discussion.
We're doing research, Clint.
It, it will, we, we've been emailing D N R this week. They've actually already come out and looked at two or three of our areas for overabundance of deer. They've given us a couple of initial findings of saying that, yeah, we're, there's some overabundant areas in Peachtree City, so.
Several.
Yeah, so they're willing to work with us on some things, so, yeah, we're, it is gonna be coming before you.
Good, thank, thank you, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Holland?
Yes, I know we've talked about boundary studies here before, but I haven't seen yet whether we're going to be going forward with any kind of formal study, or are we gonna need to hire somebody as in a consultant to help us out along the way, is that, yeah, Ben, look at?
It is in the budget for twenty, fiscal year twenty-five to do a boundary study, I forget the amount, a hundred and twenty thousand? To do a boundary study, so Robin, on top of all of her other things that she's been doing, has been, you know, tasked with getting the initial wheels moving, on looking at what that's gonna look like to you all.
Okay, last one, and then I have to comment at the end. I would eventually like to have us take a look at our trash pickup here in this city. I know that we've talked amongst ourselves on having one, one trash company for the whole city, and I'm not sure if that's the right answer, but it would certainly help on our roads and our noise and everything else, as opposed to, I've got six trucks coming down my street every week, sometimes more, and I'm sure other people in the city have those kinds of issues. But it may be an economic issue to saving our streets from all this heavy traffic going up and down, particularly the, the local streets of our community.
Anything else?
I'd like to eventually have that on the agenda, I don't know if you're even proposed yet on that, but.
No, not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
I'm leaving that to you all to.
We'll talk about it, let's talk about it.
And last, I'd like to at least shout out to all of our Jewish residents and citizens here. Today is Rosh Hashanah, it's the beginning of the new year for them, and I believe it's pronounced Shana Tova, meaning have a good new year. And I wanted to make sure we shout out to all of our Jewish neighbors, this is their new year, and that was the last thing I wanted to say.
All right, do we have executive session?
Thank goodness, no.
I was gonna make one comment, ma'am mayor. I thought when we were going from the two-by-twos to the work sessions, I was not gonna have to sit here for forty-five minutes and listen to Mr. Holland talk and talk and talk.
It's all recreation's fault.
Nevertheless, Clint, you managed to pull us into forty, forty-five minutes extra.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.